All right, we'll call to order this regular city council meeting for the Pearland City Council on Monday, July 26th at 6:30 PM. With that, we're going to have an invocation by Member Owens and we're going to have our pledges led by one of our Boy Scout troops here in just a minute. So let's all rise and join in.
All right. You pray with me on your own. It'd be beneficial. Let's open up a pipeline to the Lord. Dear heavenly fathers, we come to you today. We thank you, Lord, for all the prayers that you've answered for each and every one of us, all the blessings that we have received, Lord. As we come through here, we hear of all the things that are going on in our country and other countries, Lord, and we kind of wonder sometime of all these things, of looking at floods and looking at fires and then the epidemic looks like it's coming back again, Lord. We just need your help to control all this and we know, Lord, that you're in with us on this because you're ahead of all things that go on throughout this world, Lord. You know, it's easy to get down on everything that's going on, but I would really want to thank you, Lord, for allowing me to go to church two Sundays ago in a church and see 57 people be baptized in one day. It just comes back to Cross Point Church of what they have done for the leadership and as young and middle-aged and teenagers and senior people at the same time. So there is an outlook of things maybe be changing, Lord, in our country as it is and we just pray for that to be for the beginning. We pray for all our people that are here tonight to give them a safe travel back home. We pray for all of our police that are here, EMS and fire, namuses, and Lord be with them as they patrol our city and keep us safe all during the day and in the late and the evenings. We know we're not immune to what all is going on and we look into the Houston area and this and just within the beginning of this year, the increase is up 40% in crime, Lord. So we need our protection, we need our people, but we pray for them, Lord, to be with us. Pray that all these things in your name. Amen.
So who's going to do, who's going to lead us? Scout leader? Okay. Y'all come on. This is actually Scout Troop 446. I believe you're out of the Silver Lake area, correct? All right. Getting them lined up here. All right. So we have the two flags right here. Who's gonna, who's gonna lead the first one? Go ahead. All right.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Well, thank you for that. Thank y'all for coming out. Hope you stay with us the rest of the evening through our meeting and don't hesitate to come back. We're glad to have you here. All right. Good deal.
Mayor, I think you need to bring one of them back every time we meet to say the pledges.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. All members of council are present. Member Perez is virtual online, but the rest of council is here present and participating. With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. Mayor Protim, I believe we have a few citizens to be heard tonight.
Yes, Mayor. First, we have Mr. Jimmy Davis. If you would, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes, please. We appreciate you being here this evening to share your input with this council.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Hill Street, Pearland 77584. Gentlemen, y'all have received an email, but also I think it's part of going public record. According to the City of Pearland Municipal Code, Section 30-39, under the utilities, rates and charges when payment is due, this was modified March 22nd, 2021. Utility billing brought forth a recommendation to update the language from 14 days, which is what it said before, to the new language, which states, "All bills for utility services furnished by the city shall be due within 20 business days following the bill date." It came to my attention earlier this month when somebody said in Cycle 11, once again, they had two bills due in July and kind of caught us by surprise. Now, they were billed different months and there's been exchange with the CFO on this. Yes, they were billed in separate months. They were not billed twice in a month. However, the city is not following the ordinance, which was passed March 22nd, which the bills in question were generated after March 22nd. And what was discovered is City of Pearland has not given anybody 20 business days per the ordinance. Now, this ordinance, it applies to y'all. It's supposed to govern the city's activities. It tells you how long you're supposed to give we, the people, time to pay our bill. Many of y'all are business people. Tell me this, would you sign a contract with somebody that says, "I'm going to provide you these services and I'm going to make up the due date as I go"? Well, of course not. Your contract's going to say, "My payment terms are whatever, 30 days from date of invoice." Well, the contract that the city proposed and that you passed was the people are going to get a bill and it's going to be due 20 business days after the bill due date. I've been told that that language is confusing. It seems pretty clear to me. I'm asking, and this affects everyone, everyone that has a water bill, that is, on City of Pearland. None of us are getting 20 business days. We get 16, 17, 18, and the city is manipulating, manually changing, sorry, don't want to offend you, but they're manually changing their due dates so that in the case of Cycle 11, they're going to collect 13 bills of payments in 12 months. Give the people what the law requires. Make your bill, set your due date 20 business days after the date on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for your engagement and input. We appreciate you being here. Next, we have Mr. Zach Ward, Mayor. If you would, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and I believe you are speaking on behalf of an organization, so if staff could put up five minutes for Mr. Ward. Thank you for being here.
Zach Ward, 204 Colony Creek Drive, Leek City, Texas. Here speaking on behalf of Pearland Professional Firefighters Association, Local 4964, and this is in regards to the June 28th agenda item when Evergreen presented the step pay plans. And this came up as the recent update for this packet when it talked about the total cost to move into a step pay plan. Had to go back and find out what that actual step pay plan looked like and what it would look like moving forward. So had to bring your attention to the June 28th packet. This is the Evergreen proposal and it's specifically Exhibit 5-1. This is the proposed step pay plan for the fire department. If you draw your attention to the firefighter and driver engineer positions, you'll notice a compression issue between the two. And the goal for the step pay plan is to get rid of compression issues. That's one of the things that was talked about. The firefighter position will max out at about $20,000 more than the driver minimum starting pay. This means that a firefighter is going to be making driver pay at about year four with the 3% progression spread that was proposed. I hope that makes sense. Ideally, when a position maxes out, the minimum would start at about 2% to 3% more than the maximum of the position before it. And this could also be related to the responses that came back. Firefighter and driver operator got 12 responses back from the cities, whereas lieutenant and captain got eight and nine responses back respectively. And that could be because of the terminology that some departments use for lieutenant and some use for captain. Ideally, what we do is bring down the firefighter max and increase the driver engineer minimum to 2% to 3% above the firefighter maximum. There's a large spread in there, which is 12 steps, which each step is a year for the driver operator. We need to bring that step down to about six years. I'd also like to point out the proposal is missing the rank of paramedic. That's a non-cross train position we have in the fire department that should also be included in that step pay plan. That would be something to look at moving forward because that's also going to adjust the total cost to move into a step pay plan. And I think last time I was here, I expressed the, we would like to do meet and confer. Our union has put together a step pay plan prior to Evergreen presenting, which was extremely identical to what Evergreen presented, and it fixes that compression issue between a firefighter and a driver operator. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. That's all I have about that. Thank you.
Mayor, point of personal privilege. Is there a copy of that document, those changes, that you can give to us or send to us?
Is this the Evergreen proposal? This is our union's proposal.
No, just the changes that you, that the firefighters are requesting.
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
The changes that the firefighters are requesting, the different little adjustments. Do you have that in a piece of paper that we can?
I do have that in an Excel or I can put into PDF.
Can you just forward that to the council or to us so we can see that? I just, I want to make sure we get that input.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. That's, that's all the speakers that we have for citizen comments. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Moving forward in our agenda, we have a doctored public hearing. If Member Orlando would just read the purpose of the public hearing into the record, that'd be appreciative.
Sure, Mayor. That's a request by the City of Pearland applicant owner for approval of an amendment to the City of Pearland Thoroughfare Plan portion of the city's comprehensive plan. So moved.
All right. And so with that, we'll move to a, just a staff report for this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think Robert has a little bit of introduction and then we're going to have a brief presentation by half associates who's been working on this, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is just a minor update to our thoroughfare plan. We need to do these from time to time as requests come in. What we have is we procured the services of Kimley Horn. Mr. Mike Feeny will go over a presentation put forth of those areas with that Pearland Economic Development Group, has a majority of these changes in the lower Kirby area to take a look at their development needs and what they forecast down the road. And then we also did a little bit of relooking at some areas north of 518 between 288 and 35, just to kind of clean up some areas that, based on our land use plan, that is being updated in our comprehensive plan, et cetera, to take a look more at that look as a long term. Because remember, the thoroughfare plan is a long-term look ahead. It is a long-term planning tool. And so we look to the future, anywhere from 20, 30, 40 years out, just like we've done with water models, water modeling, land use development, et cetera. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn this over to run through this presentation to Mr. Mike Feeny from Kimley Horn and proceed from there. So thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot. I'm Mike Feeny from Kimley Horn and we worked with Robert and some of his staff on this update. The previous thoroughfare plan was approved in 2018. There's some alignment still without right of way. Development continues in Pearland. It's an attractive place to live and do business. And we wanted to reanalyze the need for future roadways. And as Robert talked about, you're trying to put people on notice 20, 30 years out, this may be where we need a roadway. So you're thinking ahead as Pearland continues to grow. We reanalyzed the thoroughfares in these two areas using the Houston-Gowson area council's travel demand model, which looks at population and employment projections and translates those into traffic and distributes to the roadway. We looked at other existing traffic data, approved developments, got some stakeholder input from the EDC, from a lot of city staff, and we looked at two study areas. The red on the left there, west of 288, and the slightly larger blue outline to the east of 288 there. And the potential changes that can come out is no change. It's fine the way it is on the plan. Some kind of bookkeeping status change, it's sufficient width. We need more right of way. It should be widened. And then we can actually change the classification, anywhere from a major thoroughfare down to a minor collector or local street. We can recommend a realignment or we could recommend a previously, previous segment be removed from the plan. So we walked through, we did a lot of driving around on a field visit and met with staff too, looked at the HGAC travel demand model, and they use a term called VC ratio. It's volume compared to capacity. So anything under 65% is generally considered under capacity. 65, 85%, that's nearing capacity. 85% to 100% is at capacity and anything over 1, 100% is over capacity. So we looked at existing and future development, took into account existing barriers, things like drainage channels, detention ponds, pipelines, looked at other studies done by other consultants and other city departments, looked at the right of way data and got some CD, city and EDC input on it. So again, two study areas, and I'll start on the first one here. This one on Miller Ranch Road, this was really more of a bookkeeping. Changed it from to be acquired to be wide, and the right of way's been partially acquired since the last plan, so it's just really a cleanup to show that the right of way's been required, acquired. Silver Lake Parkway here, we recommend some additional study. And what's going on here is the HGAC's model did not have Miller Ranch Road in its previous iteration. They're going to include it now and it's going to change the travel demands in this area, so we're recommending the city take another look once that model's published by HGAC. And it takes a while for them to vet and approve their model and release it to the cities and other, and counties for use. So that one's, just recommend additional study when the model's updated. These unnamed minor collectors here, south of Stone, they're on the plan. They don't connect. There's some, some impediments in the way. There's some residential parcels, a drainage parcel, a cemetery. They don't provide any connectivity to Stone nor between the two roadways, so there's really no point for them to be on the plan. So we're recommending removing them because they don't provide any connectivity. Hughes Ranch Road, so we're recommending that this, this, this be extended. There's a gap right now between Garden and O'Day. And showing that connection in future years would provide some additional east-west connectivity. Right now, you have McCard to the north, 518 Broadway to the south, and it's really, would be nice from a transportation planning point of view to relieve some of that pressure on those two roads by making this connection so you have a solid east-west connection. So the objectives of looking at it was we wanted a cost-effective and the route with the least impact. There's varying land use along it, so we looked at the number of parcels affected, the total square footage, number of structures affected, and then the number of barriers, like I said, detention ponds, waterways, utility easements. And we studied three alternatives. I'm showing here up on the screen. They all have the same east and west endpoints, but it varies on how they get there. So alternative one, you can see any impacted parcels shown in blue. There's a rough alignment, right of way sketched out through the middle. Alternative two, it's in green, showing the affected properties. And then this one, it's shown in purple, or should be shown in purple if you can see that on there for alternative three. And what we did is we did a qualitative, a quantitative analysis on it, and we looked at the number of parcels, square footage, impacted, properties impacted and barriers. And it came out that alternative one had the least number of impacts out of the three alternatives. That was the one we put on there. And it's a rough, a rough suggested alignment. It can wiggle a little bit, but it had the least number of impacts to properties on there. So that's what we were recommending on Hughes Ranch. To the south, 518 is getting in the HGAC future year model. It's approaching capacity. It's got 70, 75% VC ratios. McCard to the north, different sections vary from 40% all the way up to 90%. So we think that middle connection on Hughes Ranch is something that's necessary along there. And so that was why we made that recommendation. And I'm going to have Josie Ortiz, do you have any questions on anything so far?
We'll actually get, because of the public hearing, we'll get to the questions, I guess.
Okay. I'm going to have Josie Ortiz, a planner with Kimley Horn. She's going to go over the recommendations, study area number two.
Good evening, everyone. So study area two is west of 288. The changes that we're recommending are shown there in yellow. To start with, South Belt Industrial, west of Kirby Road. This alignment has been in discussions with the EDC in the lower Kirby Management District. They're currently going through a master planning process for this area, so this alignment was determined through that process. The recommendation now will be to terminate at Hooper Road and there's a slight realignment to the north. We have Labrador Road and Del Papa Street. They were two minor collectors south of Beltway 8. We're just recommending Labrador to be extended to Riley Road, previously it terminated to the north. We're recommending an upgrade to a major collector to increase some of the right of way to allow circulation in the future. We're also recommending that it be terminated at South Belt Industrial as there is no room to proceed those alignments further south. So just terminating, terminating them at another major thoroughfare. And then status change, this is again, just a bookkeeping item to document the appropriate right of way. We have Frugie Road and Promenade Shops Drive. I'll start in the middle section there, shown in yellow. We are recommending removal of this portion of that alignment. There is a drainage or detention pond in that area, so future construction will be, it will not allow the future roadway construction. And then to the west, that orange portion of Frugie Road shown, we're just recommending a downgrade because that roadway terminates there. The right of way has already been acquired in that area and it will be useful for future development, so we're leaving it on the plan, but just as a local road special designation. And then to the north of that yellow portion is Promenade Shops Drive. We're recommending an upgrade of that roadway to the north. The right of way has been acquired and it will be an ultimate 100-foot right of way section. Promenade Shops Drive, north of South Spectrum. It's along the same lines as the southern portion. We're recommending the upgrade and then a status change to document the right of way that currently exists. North Spectrum Boulevard, we are, the right of way has been acquired in portions, so again, just updating that to document what's already there. And then the realignment west of Promenade, or east of Promenade Shops Drive is to align with an existing connection to 288 and also a downgrade to match that right of way section. South Spectrum Boulevard, this roadway has been constructed, so this is, we're just documenting it to reflect what's already on the ground. And finally, Reflection Bay Drive, we are recommending a removal of this from the thoroughfare plan. It creates conflict with future intersection spacing. It's about 750 feet. The portion that connects with Kirby Drive would be about 750 feet from either intersection north or south, and it would shift the congestion rather than relieve it from the roadway network. And that's all we had for y'all.
All right. Does that complete staff's report? All right. So we'll move towards those in the audience wishing to speak either for or against these proposed changes to the thoroughfare plan can step to the podium and give us your thoughts. We'll make second attempt, those wishing to speak in favor or against these proposed changes. And then third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against proposed thoroughfare plan amendments. Seeing none, we'll move towards council for input, discussion, questions, concerns. I know I asked for some feedback from the consultants as well, so this will be the opportunity to do that. Council member?
I have a couple of quick questions to add context. The one's in lower Kirby, that's study area two, correct? Okay, great. Matt Buchanan, just real quick, these areas, this is in, I guess, PMD two? Or is this PMD one?
These would be in lower Kirby.
Oh, lower Kirby. I apologize. It's like the, do we have these improvements that are in theory being updated? Are they already rolling in the lower Kirby district?
They were originally back when we did the master plan back in 2010. Most all these roads would have been in that. We haven't updated the numbers recently, but as a total bond project that the district will eventually need to do, these would all be in it.
All right. So we don't necessarily have the money today to implement these changes, but we will at some point?
Yeah, there would, there would have to be significant value in the western part of the district to get these roads in there, but you know, I imagine eventually we'll front a lot of this money and then hopefully get paid back from the district at some point.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get clarification if there was already planning around this. And then for study area one, there was a discussion in our memo, but wasn't brought up in the presentation. Max Road or Reed Road, that's a connection from Beltway 8 down to essentially the middle of the city. Can I get some more clarification and guidance on that?
Yes. Clarification on?
For the staff and people at home, that's page 25 of 926 in the packet or page 19 of 77 in the memo.
So there was a study separate from this one that was done a few years ago to research that alignment, and so that recommended alignment came out of that study. So we did not recommend any changes for that alignment.
So is there widening then, I guess? Or what was, I guess, what was the change that, because we're updating the plan? What is, are we asking to widen it more or leave it alone or?
With this current thoroughfare plan, we are not recommending any changes to how it currently exists on the thoroughfare plan. So I believe...
Councilman Camp, Carl, let me jump in.
Sure.
We had them just relook at it because this is one that we go after with HGAC funding to try and get shares of text, you know, the money from, from HGAC to do that. So we want to make sure this alignment was correct. No major changes happening. Also taking a look overall associated with the Clear Creek Project, those things that are all playing out there. Do we need to shift anymore, knowing that we needed to stay and take a look outside of Brookside Village a little bit and work with Houston, just to kind of take a look at that and continue that process? So they just did a cursory overview and make sure there wasn't anything major outstanding.
I'm going to ask a key question to either you or to Mr. Epperson. Would that be a regionally significant project for connectivity in the area? Would that be a regionally significant project for connectivity in the area?
By the HGAC tip process definition, is that the question? It, no, not, in how they use it for regionally significant and categorizing projects. I think it's got some regional significance, but you know, they've got, they've bifurcated that system as far as the selection process to look at the major projects that are over a certain amount, that obviously fit into that category, and then projects like this, which, you know, I think previously maybe fit in that category, they look at a little bit differently now, but we can still show the regional impacts, how we tie in the overall, everything south of us to the north of us, with the connectivity between the different thoroughfare plans.
And just for the public's knowledge, whenever we say regionally significant, that's a gigantic buzzword. And so as long as we are not regionally significant, I'm not too worried about this starting, but if it becomes regionally significant, this starts relatively soon. So, I just kind of wanted to understand where are we in that box, so, I have no further questions, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments from council? Councilmember Carbone?
Yep, I mean, over my time, over the, my time up here, I mean, these look like lines, but where it really comes into effect is when somebody goes to plot their property, all of a sudden, we've got a dotted line across their property, and they've got to give it up to us, so. I don't know, I guess I'm looking at Hughes and all the number of affected property owners through there. Have we done any notification to any of the property owners?
Councilman Carbone, with that, please remember, this is a long-term planning document, so similar to if you want to use that regards of that one, if we take a look to the south and take a look in those developments, or not even those developments, but those lands that are to the south, when we're just land planning, this is just the same principle, is that, should they come forward, should a development, let me say when I rephrase that, development of a number of homes, or developer come in who has aggregated several properties together, then this would help set that foundation, to say that there is a connectivity that's necessary, that's driven by the development. Other than that, you know, we haven't notified properties out there that this is there, but it's on our maps, it's the same principle as we would have down in the southern portion as we continue development across, or as we developed plans.
I mean, I just, I struggle, because some of these, I mean, somebody owns land out there, they've owned it for generations, and now if they come in to build one single-family home on property their family's owned for multiple generations, you may be taking a chunk out based off of this preliminary alignment?
Well, there's a couple of things with that, Councilman Carbone, we talked about this several years ago, and also, probably about 18 months ago, or two years, I'll say right in that stand frame, with another plat of a single-family that transferred hands within the same generational aspect, father-son, grandfather-son. You gave us the latitude to be able to say that, with that regards, it's just a single-family, it's not going to change anything, we're not on schedule to take a look at that road, then we didn't necessarily have to accept that. And because we didn't have a formal alignment, we didn't have a formal plan, you allowed us at a staff level to be able to say, it's just a single-family house. So, that was the stance we took with that particular landowner, and moved from there, but if a developer comes in that is aggregated, then we would take a look at that requirement for that road.
Okay, so you have the flexibility and these, specifically the Hughes alignment, I mean, this is just officially saying, hey, we want these to connect at some point, but
Yes, sir.
but we don't need to dive into the details over alignment 1, 2, or 3 at this time?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Tech Dot plans to widen 518 Broadway from 288 up to, well, I've heard different places where it's gonna stop, went all the way to 35 and other times, I've heard it's gonna stop at McLean, where Walnut intersects Broadway. I've heard four lanes each direction, and we know that that's the main east-west corridor in our city, even when you add, we complete McCard and do this link that Councilman Carbone was talking about. What are we gonna do, or what are the plans to eliminate the bottleneck that is going to occur when you go from four lanes to two lanes? And then added to that, you've got a railroad stop and a major intersection there. What are the plans for that? Because it's already a problem, and if you go from four to two, it's just gonna aggravate the problem.
Are you talking on 518 proper?
518 and the 35 intersection, right there where the railroad track is.
I believe the Broadway corridor plan that we actually did for the Economic Development Corporation last year presented several options for that, but that wasn't part of this study here. We looked at some one-way pairs over there, and extending that treatment across to the east side of 35, so there were some options developed and something for that one, just to handle the question you're talking about.
Okay, we're just looking at the chart and the color schemes in your key, it looks like it shows major thoroughfare with plans to be widened, and it shows it going all the way up to 35 to be widened, so. If I understand, it's kind of hard to see the color scheme with the broken dots on it, but it looks like it's secondary thoroughfare, I'm sorry, primary thoroughfare, major thoroughfare to be widened, all the way to 35.
That is on, that is on the previous thoroughfare plan, we did not look at it this time, we were asked to look at a specific setting.
As the city looked at this, as far as long-term plans and what we're going to do, because it's already a problem, I travel it every day, and if I get stopped by a stranger...
So you're speaking of the segment of 518, let's say between McLean and Berry Rose, or from Walnut to Walnut?
Yes.
So...
More and more from 35 to Walnut going east or west.
East or, yes, sir, so, in that segment, Tech Dot's current project that they're working on really stops at that western edge of where 518 and Walnut come together. We've asked them to expand that and take a look at that further. They've pointed us in the direction of HGAC to study that area further. We do see the need for additional capacity through there, just like on the rest of 518. And just kind of to clarify, you were mentioning four lanes to two lanes. The existing roadway is, of course, four lanes with a continuous left turn lane. The proposed widening by Tech Dot would have six lanes with turn lanes, so three lanes in each direction. And so, that ends there at Walnut, and what we've asked HGAC is to come in and help us do a study to analyze basically Walnut to Walnut, and what are the options for providing additional capacity through there?
Councilman Little, let me add on and dovetail on what Mr. Epperson stated, is that we are working with them through one of their programs to have that evaluated, and also the continuation of the evaluation all the way down to the city limits on Broadway as well. So, those are being vetted through HGAC's funding mechanism, and we're waiting to hear back. We did apply for that, so, like I said, we're waiting for those two applications to be, I hope, approved, to have HGAC do it.
Yeah, I just want to go back on that Study Area 1, and I think some words have been mentioned on that on Hughes Ranch Road. And from where it comes down through and goes to Reed and Roy, then on over to Orange Street, and it shows to be a major collector through that area through there. And then it comes back in, I guess, on Orange down there, well, no, it's Major Collector Street. It's on Exhibit 4, Study Area 1. But it changes, I guess, maybe three times from Hughes Ranch, where it goes to Reed, and then goes on across Roy and and Garden, and go down that way to O'Day, until it gets to Orange Street.
So is your question over the classification of the roadway?
Yeah, it looks like it changes two or three times.
It changes one time, I believe, it is the green secondary thoroughfare from 288 to Cullen, and then everything east of Cullen, that's all in red. Some of it's dashed and dotted, because the road doesn't exist there, we've got to acquire right-of-way. Other areas need to be widened, but everything east of Cullen is red, so that's a major collector street.
So that's gonna turn into a major collector all the way down to 35?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was wondering, and going back to Tony, there was a situation, Tony, that we had a few years back for 20 acres, and it was subdivided, gonna be subdivided, and come to find out, when it was gonna subdivide and give, you know, keep there and give some of the family to build houses on it, it's right there off of Magnolia. And come to find out, we had roadway going down through there for right-of-way. And they got to that point, then they found, okay, well, we didn't know it, but there's detention site on there, so it turned out to be a fiasco, but I think, you know, anytime that we go through this, I think there should be a major time spent with property owners up down there through that way, to be able to look at that and see what, you know, what the ponos are, but we have gone through that once before, Robert, going down almost on Morgan down there, and so. But that's the way it was during that period of time, but it was just the people that owned the property didn't know that, that it was there. There's some condos on it now, so, okay.
Member Perez, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just kind of dovetailing on to what Member Carbone has said, he and I have had conversations in the past, and somewhere it says about the power and the authority of this map. And the difficulty is, we need it for future planning, but its authority allows allows this map to be used as essentially a way for us to acquire land without having to be, having to compensate the landowner for it. I think we've developed some better policies for when the impact is minimal to the city, but it's disproportionate to the individual landowner, particularly in single-family. But I do think that there's probably a conversation we need to have, probably sooner rather than later, about what our policy needs to be for pretty much any development. If we're gonna do the thoroughfare plan to take additional 10 feet, or make a 100-foot to 120-foot, like say down 518, you know, I think there's, there may be some argument that that does not necessarily need to be compensated, but if we're spending, splitting a piece of property in two, be it commercial or residential, you know, do we, do we as a council feel comfortable that, as a condition of them plating, they have to dedicate land without being compensated, when otherwise, it wouldn't be the case? So, I know, I'm not gonna argue against the need for the thoroughfare plan, it should be adopted, but this has been an ongoing conversation, and maybe it is time that council develops a policy that we're all comfortable with, that's fair to the individual landowners and to their citizens.
All right, thank you, thank you. Could staff put the Hughes Ranch Road exhibits kind of back up real quick? So there was one that actually had a very good exhibit showing an existing subdivision, there we go.
This one?
Right there, so. And can somebody explain how or what the thought process is on this going through that existing subdivision? Because I think all, Alternative 1, 2, and 3 show it going through.
Yes, so the thought behind putting it through there is that there is an existing roadway, so it takes less property. And again, the thought behind it is, when the entire area develops, that's when you get the roadway. It would not be, the intention was not to take the property from the individual homeowners, but because there is an existing roadway, it is cheaper to build in the future.
And if I understand the key correctly, we're talking about a major collector, 80-foot of right-of-way. I'm pretty sure there's not 80-foot of right-of-way in that existing roadway.
There is not, I believe it's closer to 60 or 70. So it would be a taking of equal, typically, it's a taking of equal land from each side of the roadway, the existing roadway. But again, that would be determined at the time of design and engineering.
Any idea on timing of a construction on something like this? What would it, where is it in our CIP?
Mayor Cole, it's not in our CIP, again, this tool is a long-term planning tool, please realize that. Yes, I understand that going through that subdivision has been back and forth for decades, on several renditions, showing connectivity between the two connections on Hughes Ranch Road to Orange Street, in tying with the future associated with Garden or O'Day being upgraded to 100-foot right-of-way, or a 80-foot right-of-way, those north-south contributors, when you tie in that east and west, you're always looking for about 3/4 to a mile separation between major, either collectors or arterials. That's kind of where this falls, is in that 3/4, it splits the middle. It's long-term. I can't, to answer, say, is it five years, 10 years, could be 50 years. It depends on what drives in that center portion associated with development.
No, that's fair, it's a fair assessment, I'm just asking. And if I remember correctly, most of the lots in here are like one-acre type lots. Is it side lots that this goes down, or is it frontage, it's hard to see on here?
Mayor Cole, there's, it's about a 50-50 split. As you look through, if you dive into Google Earth or Google Maps, those type, you'll see some, but they are large acres. The ones kind of in the center face Marsha Lane, those on the outsides would face some of the side streets. So, it's already a 60-foot right-of-way right now, but it could be, take a look at, as development happens or development occurs, those thoroughfare plans and changes in the years to come, but this is a long-term planning tool.
Okay, I just wanted to pull that and highlight it, make sure that, I mean, if we approve this, this is what we're talking about. And so, could end up on somebody's doorstep in the next eight, nine, 10, 15, 20 years, that they're not, they're not ready for, so.
With McCard coming through, I mean, would it be prudent to wait and see what the traffic patterns and the flows look like after that, before we throw it on here?
Councilman Carbone, I would caution on that, because like I said, this is a planning, if we have it now, then the aspect is, is those things can change later, once we see those traffic flow and those patterns change over time. Whereas, if they do change, then we just need to have this in play. That decision is planning for now versus retroactively trying to make something happen. We can talk about that and have those continued conversations year after year, as we do through. Also realize, we'll be probably looking at a major thoroughfare plan update in a couple of years, once the final census numbers are, we get HGAC planning tools active. But, I would just caution on that, is that, I, again, this is, multiple times since I've been here, has been brought back before you all to put in, to keep there as a east-west connector. We've all known the studies, we've all seen the traffic patterns. If you don't have something in place, or let's say we build it without, then we'll start talking to all the HOAs about, hey, we have all this traffic coming through, these people are using this as a quick cut-through, what do we do to do this, to change that? Rather take a look and have that forecast start now, and then we can take a look in the road and in the future to come, if it's necessary or not, depending on traffic, depending on traffic patterns.
And the version we used in the model, Councilman, had McCard being completed, so that was already accounted for and showing the need for this extension.
Yeah, man, I understand that, but, I mean, we can model, I mean, y'all get paid for models, and, I mean, now that we're so close to having the roadway open and having real traffic counts, I don't know, I think I'd be leaning more towards seeing what it looked like after McCard's complete.
Tony, does it make sense to approve this and amend out this particular project? I mean, I understand the heartburn, as somebody who's a developer, though, these are lines on a map until it really moves forward, but, I mean, if there's heartburn, I'm willing to amend this out, if we want to amend this particular one.
I think that would come in the next action item under new business, but, yeah.
I mean, I'm willing to hear that out, if that's legitimate concern.
I think that's a good thought, so. Any other questions, comments, this is on the public hearing side. Staff, any other wrap-up comments, Mr. Feeney, anything?
I'll just echo what Mr. Upton said, when you leave a gap in often, I get called in in that neighborhood to come do the studies to deal with the cut-through traffic, so what he said is true, you know? If you leave a gap in there, sometimes you will have, you know, these implications of people still cutting through the neighborhood to get there. So that's the only thing I offer.
All right, with that, we're gonna adjourn this public hearing, and then we'll move forward with new business item number one. Mayor Proten, would you place that on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor, consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1517-4, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we've just had our staff report, so with that, I guess, any last-minute questions, comments, concerns from council?
You know, one of the things...
I was gonna say, that'd be the time. Yeah, well, I mean, I guess, if staff's saying they have enough flexibility in the current ordinance, it's, I don't have too much heartburn, and I'll rely on the professional. rely on the professionals reluctantly.
I was just gonna say, you know, CIP is not in a, in concrete. It's, it can be changed each year. So, on their updated to do that.
Okay. So with that, we've, uh, we'll move to, um, Madam Secretary to call for our vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1517-4.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, uh, actually prior to getting consent agenda up here, we actually missed one citizen to be heard and he wanted to address an item that is on the consent agenda. So I'm gonna ask the Mayor Pro Tim to introduce, uh, this speaker, uh, to the podium. And then, uh, if and when council wants to pull an action item, we could. I want to make sure that his comments were heard, uh, prior to moving forward with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Paul Eskine, if you would, make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. We appreciate you being here.
Uh, thank you, council. Um, Paul Eskine, representing Passau Enterprises and Houston Aircraft Instruments at 2519 Park Avenue. Uh, this is concerning the Sullivan Plan Development in the Old Town Site. Um, we gave our concerns to the P&amp;Z and the council. And this is an update. Um, we continue to raise our issues with the developer and have discussed the outstanding issues over the phone. Uh, the negotiations are going okay and the developer is working with us to work out the concerns. Uh, for our alley concern, uh, the developer does not mind the travel direction of the alley. And so it's currently two-way and we understand the alley will remain two-way as it has always been between the end of our property and north to Pear Street. A question though did come up, will the alley have no parking signs or fire lanes to prevent miscommunication between the residents and businesses that the alley is not to be used for parking? So that's something that's on the city. Um, for the parking lot, our parking lot not to be used as a cut-through, the developer will install signs that the lot is not to be used as a cut-through. Uh, if the city would like to make the alley south of our property line to Walnut, one-way go into Walnut, but leave the area on our property north to Pear two-way, it will additionally alleviate the potential of our parking lot being used as a cut-through. Uh, other concerns are being worked out with the developer. Uh, there are outstanding concerns that are affecting the area and several homes and businesses are still concerned about the infrastructure, the drainage, uh, the availability of parking and the traffic. As the infrastructure plans are still being finalized, uh, the traffic study is not completed. Um, it leaves the parking availability. Uh, the developer stated to us that their modeling shows an F-150 truck can back out from the garage into the alley as there are no driveways. But there were not able to say whether there was another vehicle in the garage. So if there's not enough space with two cars, then the garage will only fit one vehicle. So we also know many people have more than two vehicles. They use their garage for storage. Uh, obviously this is the owner's problem, but it becomes a community problem. So the question is, has the developer planned on how many vehicles each resident will have? Some residents will have multi-cars. Developer mentioned that one side of the street will be, will have additional parallel parking. If the garages only take one vehicle or the residents only put one vehicle in the garage, has the amount of parking spaces been taken into consideration? If not, the people will park in other businesses and location, causing the owners the problems. Uh, we ask that the city, uh, make sure that the numbers have been checked to facilitate parking in the garages or along the street. And if this is not enough parking, then other parking space needs to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Eskine. We appreciate your input. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Eskine. Always a pleasure to see you. Uh, moving forward to the consent agenda, any items to be pulled from consent agenda? David?
I'd like to remove item F, and if we could move that up, uh, since the applicant and the, the citizen comments are here.
Any others? All right. Well, uh. Member Kamkar, could you present consent agenda, all items with the exception of Ds and David and F as in Frank?
Consideration possible action, consent agenda with the exceptions of D and F. So moved.
We have motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I did not hear the second.
Uh, Dickens. Mayor Pro Tim.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve consent items A through F with the exception of consent item D and consent item F.
All right. And if y'all would allow a point of privilege, we can go ahead and dispense with F, if that's okay, since the parties are all here instead of waiting. Okay. So, uh, moving, uh, forward, uh, Mr. Little, would you place F on the table?
Consideration impossible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000M-211. So moved.
Begging.
Hernandez. Motion and a second, uh, I guess brief staff report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is, uh, the second reading, uh, was proved at the last first reading, uh, for a residential development in our Old Town area. Uh, several lots have been, uh, compiled by the developer and they're going to bring a product that, uh, as referenced, uh, brings a unique residential investments into the community. And so, uh, this PD provides the, uh, uh, framework, uh, for the, uh, residential developments. There's a separate, um, economic, uh, factor development agreement that the city has worked out. Uh, will it be infrastructure investments and, uh, improvements to the general water sewer and drainage in the area? Uh, but this particular action before you is for the residential, uh, portion of it and, uh, happy answering questions on that. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, we'll move to questions, comments from council, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give staff the opportunity to address the, uh, the parking, uh, question. So in, in the alleyways, uh, specifically, will, will those be marked as fire lanes and will be, parking be allowed? Um, and then second, kind of related, um, I guess the, the traffic impact analysis, will that actually show the movements in and out of the garage? Um, and I guess you can draw two cars on the map, but can you make them actually work in real life?
John, you want to try to do that or is it Robert?
I'll just speak to the, um, to the alleyways and the fire lanes. The, the fire lanes do have a specific width that will, will have to remain clear and will be identified. So it depends on the final width of the alleys, whether any, there'll be any parking, uh, out there. Uh, so we'll have to see based on the final site plan. The alley, kind of the final decision on the alley width and the direction will come out of the TIA. Um, with regard to parking, one of the reasons, uh, that this plan proposes on-street parking is to help assist, uh, making sure there is additional parking. So on-street parking spaces will be created as, as part of this development. Um, development does require parking be provided, but we can't require people to park there. So, uh, you can give somebody two-car garage. You can't tell them they can't keep all their stuff in the garage and not their car. Uh, so that's an issue and any potential issue in any residence development. Uh, with regard to what we can control, we will be looking into the TIA at, uh, I believe it was discussed at the first reading, looking at those movements, ensuring that those were there. Um, and we'll do our best to ensure that, that the traffic flows properly through those areas.
All right. Thank you. Member Kamkar?
I'd like to just kind of rehash and, and Mr. Eskine is here with us, what the three items that needed to be addressed. One was the two-way nature of the alley as opposed to the one-way. Um, the second, if I'm recalling, and please fill me in, it was the parking as people not parking in the back as opposed to the front where there is parking, uh, and not parking in his lot or the businesses around there. And then the third was making sure that the drainage plan complied with the city's requirements. If I'm remembering correctly, um.
And, and just infrastructure upgrade in general?
Right. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think this is a great project that's going to be coming here. I think it's going to help property values. I think most importantly, it's going to bring the American dream to younger families. Um, there's not a lot of housing in the city. We're already a very built-out state. Um, but I would tell, uh, the Sullivan Brothers and their representatives, um, we don't, we don't build at the detriment of the people who've been here for years and years and years. And there's got to be a common understanding that we play in the sandbox. Um, if I go back to the meeting minutes we just approved, uh, I just want to make sure we, we have it on the record for the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Mueller agreed to a condition in the development agreement to acquire all signage resulting from the traffic impact analysis repurchased by the applicant. Mr. Mueller, are we still gonna roll with those rules? All right. And so staff, are we gonna make sure that we have that in our development agreement that we'll have the signage as?
That's not a development agreement between the city and Mr. Mueller. That's between Mr. Mueller and the property owners. So that's, that's not what was presented to you today that you approved at the special meeting. Uh, however, we wouldn't know what the signage would be because the traffic impact analysis isn't complete.
Okay. I just, I'm just reading to you what's in the minutes, Lawrence. I'm trying to, to belabor the point. So I just, I want to, we want to be faithful to what we're doing. And I know that Sullivan team wants to be good neighbors and is committed to Pearland. And I know that the, uh, the businesses here are committed, uh, to being good neighbors. I just want to reiterate, um, you know, we're not all lawyers. We don't need everything in writing. Sometimes we shake our hands, but I'd just like to make sure that we take care of things the right way. Um, I hopefully before we move forward too far that the two-lane item is addressed and I think the signage will be addressed. So I'm looking forward to this, uh, moving forward.
Uh, Mayor, just while the applicant's representatives are here and Alan, I, I heard you audibly, but I don't think the people in the recording, if you had anything else to add, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. And also if you could just, uh, speak to Member Kamkar's questionings for the public record, please.
Sure. Uh, again, Alan Mueller with Gromax Development, uh, representing Sullivan Brothers. Uh, with regard to the, the signage for the parking lot for the Houston Aircraft, yes, we have agreed that, uh, we'll work up that signage and the exact wording, I think, still needs to be nailed down. But yes, we're on the same page there. Um, with regard to the one-way versus two-way al, uh, alleys, uh, we did add a note to one of the exhibits in the PD. Uh, Martin, I don't remember the exact one, but I, and I don't have a paper copy with me, but we did add a, a note to one of the exhibits that's, uh, should be in the second reading, uh, that indicates that the one-way versus two-way will get, you know, addressed with the, with the TIA. Uh, with regard to, uh, fire lanes, signage or whatever, you know, with, in the alleys, certainly that's city requirements that will have to be addressed. Uh, and then I think just the last one is just parking in general. Um, you know, I think, uh, that should be addressed in the development agreement. Um, there's an exhibit, uh, G, which shows the general location of the on-street parking that's going to be added. Uh, and that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 spaces. Um, you know, uh, left, it's subject to final design, but, uh, that exhibit, uh, in the development agreement does show the general locations where that, uh, on-street parking is going to be added. I think that covers those topics.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask, uh, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the second reading and final, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000M-211.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, moving forward, new business, uh, continued, uh, number two. Uh, Mr. Owens, would you read new business item number two in the record, please? And before you do, I just want to ask Mr. Perez a question. Are you able to follow along online? So if I needed to call on you to put something into the record, you could, the new business?
Hundred percent, Mayor. I'm on board.
Got it. Okay. Member Owens?
Okay.
Number two.
All right. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1603. So moved.
Have a motion and a second into staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, these two, we have, uh, two items, uh, that are relative to a, uh, bond financing sale that occurred, uh, earlier today. Uh, these were, uh, been discussed with you, uh, previously, and these are the final actions that are necessary as part of, uh, our capital improvement program, our budgeting and the intent to reimburse that the council passed. Uh, and so, uh, Amy Johnson, our CFO, and then John Robuck will give you an update on the particulars of the finance sale.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, Mayor, council members, John Robuck, Beok Financial Securities. Uh, before we get started, I want to introduce Tanya Fisher, the audience here. She's your bond counsel. Uh, she actually drafted the, uh, legal docs for asking you approved tonight. We did have success today in the market. Um, in fact, we've hit the market at the right time. I'd rather be lucky than good any day of the week. And, uh, this, this chart here shows, uh, the market and, uh, where we hit it. And I'll go through the results of all four bond issues. Um, actually the, the permanent improvement bonds and the water sewer and refunding bonds, y'all approved a parameter order or ordinance for those a couple of weeks, months ago. And so those have actually been approved. So these are the results of those two sales. Tonight, we're asking you in items, uh, two and three to approve the issuance of the certificates of obligation 2021A and 2021B, those two items. Like I said, this is the, the bond buyer index. This is a weekly average municipal bonds. If you look there on the far right, uh, the blue line represents the general obligation index. This is the certificates of obligation and also the permanent improvement bonds we sold. It's at 2.03%. That's one basis point or 0.01% off of all-time lows. And then on the red line, there's the revenue index, which is what we use to measure the water and sewer bond issues we sold. We're at 2.39, which is the all-time low for the water and revenue index. So like I said, we hit the market at the right time. Uh, investors were hungry to buy bonds and, uh, they sure liked yours. Um, I'll go through the permanent improvement bonds first. Um, we sold those this morning also. We sold 14,905,000 in bonds and generated pro, uh, proceeds of 18 million, 15,250 dollars for the city's projects, according to the CIP. Um, and this was sold over a 20-year period and structured to minimize the impact on your tax rate. Uh, this final source and uses on the next page. Again, we sold 14,905 in bonds plus premium. Investors paid more than par for bonds to the tune of 3,288,000, less your cost of issuance of 178,000, generated the proceeds of 18 million, 15,250 dollars. And the all-costed interest rate for 20-year debt was a 2.042%. That's about 40 basis points lower than we showed you back in the May meeting. So again, rates have come down and we took advantage of it today. The certificates of obligation, we sold both series, uh, today also, sold 7,010,000 in bonds for the series 2021A bonds, generated proceeds of 8,551,000. And then for the 21B certificates of obligation, we sold nine-year debt, uh, sold six, uh, 15 million, 605,000 and generated proceeds of 18 million, 472,464 dollars. And if, remember, these are for the TERS projects. So we have a shorter call on these and we have a bullet maturity out in 2030 when we believe we'll be repaid and we'll pay these bonds off with the reimbursement from the TERS. From a sources and uses perspective, um, the 2021As sold an all-costed interest rate of a 1.931%. Again, that's about 40 basis points less than we showed you on, in the May meeting. And the 2021B bonds or certificates, we, uh, sold with an all cost of a 2.583%. And for the water sewer bonds, if you recall, we, uh, added a little refunding portion into this, the water sewer bond issue. We refunded the 2012 bonds at outstanding par amount of 4 million, 30,000 in bonds with interest ranging from 3% all the way to 3.625%. We were able to increase the savings where we showed you in May by almost $200,000. That's shown on this slide here. Uh, going from left to right, you have your current water sewer debt service requirements, less the bonds that we refunded, plus the refunding portion of the bonds, the water sewer bonds, between about 3,415,000 in principal amount. Savings there is in the yellow column, about 16 years of savings, about 34,000 change a year in savings, uh, totaling 617,836 dollars. And then the new money portions there, the next two columns, we sold, uh, 6,955,000 in bonds to generate proceeds of 8,336,000. We sold 6,955,000 in bonds to generate proceeds of $8,336,500 in proceeds for the city. Even though this is one issue, we split into two so we show the savings compared to the new money portion. The refunding portion, because it was shorter, had all cost interest rate of a 1.874%. And again, it generates savings of $617,836. Interest cost savings, which is a present value savings, 13.9%. Then for the new money portion, the 20-year debt, we sold for all cost true interest rate of a 2.016%. Remember, we presented this schedule back in May. And we've gone through all these dates and we're actually in the last one. We were second to last one. We're asking you to approve the certificates of obligation tonight. And then if y'all approve those, we'll close on Tuesday, August 24th, excuse me. And at what time the city will receive the funds from these bond sales. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the bond issues, on the financing sides. And Mrs. Fisher will be happy to answer the question you have on the legal side.
All right. Thank you, John. And does that complete staff report?
It does, sir. And just to reiterate, you know, this is the payment and will finance the projects that we've began at the beginning of this fiscal year in large part. And obviously pleased that we were able to lower the, what we intended for the original issue amounts and had such great rates that we're going to be servicing forward. Thank you.
That's good news. With that, we'll move to council. Questions, comments, concerns? Anyone? Questions from council on the COUs?
I guess some of this, going back through on this particular one of $7,180,000, I guess it is, on there. And looking at $359,000 a year on interest. And 20 years, we, you know, we're talking about a lot of money. Time we had the interest in the other part on to it. And some of the items that we're financing, I mean, it's lasting longer than, it won't last as long as how many years that we're financing this for. I guess that was my concern on this, you know, the interest of 3.4 million over 20 years and 10.6 for the 20 years added to the principal on there. And it, actually, it comes out more when we look at the other parts that we're going to get to in a few minutes on selling the others on there to do that. But it, you know, some of it, it just brings up a question that we're financing some stuff longer, millions of dollars longer than what it'll last, you know. We're seeing that in some of the areas that we're at now. Selling bonds to do this and paying interest and paying on the principal on it. And whatever it's for, don't last maybe six years. We're paying, you know, and that's probably not your problem. It's our problem on there. But it just seems like, you know, it's a little bit of a different thing to take a look at of what we're financing and paying on for so many years and whatever we're doing, whatever we're buying doesn't last for 20 years. But it seemed like the total amount on this one is coming out quite a bit when you add all the interest that's due at the time over 20 years for that added to it.
Mayor, if I could clarify, the capital improvements definitely are fixed assets that last at least the 20 years. So the roads, the facilities, the buildings, that's a requirement of the bond financing. You know, there may be an exception, part of furniture and fixtures that are part of a building. That's very normal, but the building itself, the improvements are most certainly useful life beyond what we're financing. And the, just like with our mortgages, the interest rates, interest compounded over time. But that's why you finance them and it's very reasonable and affordable. And as you heard, we have rock bottom, record-low rates that we're having to pay for that.
Yeah, I understand that part of it to do it. But you know, it's adding debt and then compounding debt. When we get to number three down here, we're adding on top of that again. So, I mean, you know, I just think, you know, sometimes we need to take a look at it and see if it's really necessary. And going back to some of the stuff in our budget where it says the council needs to take a look at the priorities on there and saying, hey, we can do some of these, but, you know, we need to postpone it. And I take that very seriously in the white paper that we have for the budget, looking at it. But it just seems like, you know, it gets to be significant. One that we're looking at coming up here pretty soon, be on the tours, be the same thing. Paying back even though they're paying interest and principal on that. But still, we've got to pay the interest and the payments on it for a number of years before we ever get to the point of getting the money back. That's all I have.
Councilmember?
Yes, sir. Mr. Roche, for these bonds that we, I guess, were started, I guess, back in October in 2020, when the intent to reimburse, this was pre our policy updates around COUs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. I'm going to, this was predates me, so I'm going to be abstaining just for my time on council. But some of these projects are needed.
Questions, comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote?
Member Owens?
All right. I understand I'm not happy with it.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Abstain.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Little. Member Perez.
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to one to approve the first and only reading of ordinance number 1603.
All right. Member Perez, we'll move to you for new business item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1604. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Just real briefly, you heard about the bond sale. And I'll just make the notation that this is for the TERS reimbursed projects. So these are shorter term, are bringing a higher interest rate. But the interest will be charged, will be reimbursed as well, actually more than what we're paying out. So we're arbitraging to a positive for the city for that when the TERS is able to pay us back for that. Nothing to add.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote?
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Abstain.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Little. The motion carries six to zero to one to adopt the first and only reading of ordinance number 1604.
All right. Moving forward to new business item number four. Back to you, Mr. Orlando. Would you place that on the table, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2021-154. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
So this is the city's five-year capital improvement program. We dedicated an entire Saturday morning to the review of this. We look at this annually, but it is a long-term, five-year plan that provides for the city's investments that are required for water, sewer, facilities, roads. These things that are the long-term investments that are required to meet the needs of the city today and tomorrow. So we do have a brief presentation just to recap and to share some of the questions that were brought up from that Saturday.
We'll turn it over to Mary Kabley or Robert?
Good afternoon, city council members and Mayor Cole. Today, we are looking at the resolution for adopting the 22 through 26 capital improvement plan. So I'll move through this presentation pretty quickly since you've seen it before. But I'll make sure to point out the things that have changed. So just a quick overview of the timeline. We are now in July. We will hopefully be adopting via resolution the CIP tonight. And then in August, we will be coming back with the budget for that first year of the CIP. You know, it gets budgeted with the annual budget. So you'll see that in August. We wanted to hit again on some of the upgrades to the communications platforms and planning that we do around the CIP. Robert, would you mind talking about those?
Thank you, Mr. Roche, Mayor and Council. As we continue to go through the CIP planning process, those are all done and notifications to you through pre-awards, project update memos, our bi-monthly milestone report. We also do council updates and taking a look at those council updates. We, as we talked about, we held our June 19th CIP workshop with you. We also have scheduled those quarterly updates dealing with drainage and facilities coming up. Again, also moving, as we discussed in that workshop, to move up input from council in the early budget session. This will be taking place next year for the 2023 fiscal year so we can get you all to provide your input to that CIP early on. And then continuing on, as we do each evaluation for each capital improvement program, each capital project within the program, is that we review the schedule, the letting date. We continue to augment that as we go through the design process. We work with our intent to reimburse is based on the CIP budget, as we've talked about previously. And then that takes it where we use that intent to reimburse to begin our projects, to design, bid, award, and then take a look at the end of selling the debt is adjusted based off of those project estimates as we continue to move forward with the project and get it into construction. Also, kind of one of the new things is with the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA from the federal government is that we're also looking to fund some water and sewer projects with those funds. That's a new twist to it. So that's a change that we've had that you'll see in the projects. Finally, as we, as we take a look with that per your feedback, we're taking a look at the emergency provision storage plan to be able to convert that and use cash funding versus debt funding, as was discussed in our CIP. At this time, turn it back over to Mr. Roche to go ahead and talk about some of the highlighted items in the spreadsheets following.
Sure. So these sheets haven't changed dramatically since you last saw them. So for the general government or non-enterprise projects here, you see the new ones outlined in blue and then a check mark next to their funding source. Nothing has changed on this list, except for the public, sorry, except for, oh, sorry, it's on the next page, I believe. Sorry, Robert. Where, do you know where the safety storage facility is?
Your public safety building, no, the safety renovations is on the slide prior to this. As you'll see, oh, right there. It'll be the fifth blue line down says public safety, is it public safety building renovations?
Yes.
No.
No, it's all right. Yep. So what's changed here is that that emergency storage facility is now cash funded like we talked about. That is pending if we can find the money. It doesn't automatically mean that it goes into the budget for next year. Moving on to the water and sewer revenue-backed issuances. Mr. Upton, if you want to talk about Berry Rose a little bit?
So council, with regards to the Berry Rose, this was a heavy discussion that we talked about during the CIP worksheet workshop program. With that, from that evaluation, we're taking a look in the memo that came out to you a week ago, is that we are going to be working with our wastewater modeling consultant, that is Fries and Nichols, to evaluate the plans or the ideas that were put forth during this discussion. So we are currently in the process of developing that scope right now to make sure we analyze the various alternatives in detail. Then from that standpoint, we'll develop our level of effort and then return this back to you for your consideration. With that, the anticipated length of time is to approximately take about six months. With that, with those decisions at the end of that to determine best course of action for Berry Rose and Longwood. From this is that no further expenditures other than this level of effort for this study would come further from the current CIP project that is labeled for Berry Rose. So we'll just be looking at expending the study out of this process. So we'll be seeing you late August, probably early September, once we finish the negotiations of our scope of services. Mr. Roche?
All right. Moving on, these are the capital improvement projects in the enterprise fund. Again, the blue projects are the new ones. You can see the funding source to the right. Nothing on this page has changed since the last time we spoke. And then the second page as well, nothing has changed since the last time we spoke. Same projects, same amounts. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Clyde, is that?
Yes, sir. But as we said, this is a process and pleased that, appreciate all your attention and questions and looking forward to kicking this off.
Good deal. We'll turn to council for any questions, comments?
Can we put that number two back up there, page number two, on the projects? I guess it was. No, I don't. Yeah, that one right there. Projects in progress. Explain that. I mean, it looks like, is that projects that are ongoing right now have been?
Yes, sir. Those are projects that either have been authorized previously in fiscal year 21, moving through that process.
So those, we're already spending money on those projects now.
That would be correct, sir. Those projects have already been approved. It just shows across where the debt funding or the funding mechanism is spread over multiple years.
Yeah. So that's pretty well out the door. The rest of them, there's not any funding on it, which we'll be looking at. All right. I guess one thing, Robert, on that, before I get off the field here. When we got project in progress there, is that a P E R being done or what is the status on that? How much of design work we're doing on any of these right now on some of these projects?
It just depends on the level where the progress of the project is located. For example, I'll pull out the Westwood Village Water Quality Program. That's going to be in design at this particular case because I just know that right now. If you take a look at Orange Street Service Center Phase Two, that's in design right now. The John Hargrove Water Reclamation Facility Expansion, that's in construction. So those, it's just various. It just says it's the project is in progress somewhere along the line.
A lot of those that's showing in progress, they've already been to council for contracts on the P E R.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Upton, just, we've had a lot going on. So every item in the blue that's on the screen and in our memo, this is really the first time it's been introduced into the CIP? Or is this a previously updated item?
It's a combination of both, sir. For example, we'll use the ones in the wastewater portion. So with our new model that came out last year, we've taken and reorganized our lift stations that need to be addressed based off the evaluation priority. And so you'll see a lot of those lift stations show up because of the critical nature of where they are in the evaluation process, whether that's in poor condition or high impact due to failure. So those would be new. Some of them have been relocated a little bit, moved around. We'll go on to the water side. Green Tea Repump Abandonment. Our water model that we use that we developed two years ago and continue to augment last year is that showed that we didn't need, do not need to have that repressurization station. So we're going to call to abandon that asset because it doesn't need to be done. So those are the things that you're saying.
If I could, Robert, to be just perfectly clear, the, they're new from previous CIP, but they were in the Saturday discussion, et cetera, right?
You are correct, sir, Mr. Pearson. You've seen them on Saturday in the workshop, but they may not have been in the 2021 CIP or we created a new or we moved them up. And then to further clarify, there's several of them that have been in the five-year CIP and something changed with them as far as timing. Is that correct? Like Hill House Road Annex Two? Correct. That is correct.
And then the one item that caught my eye was a train depot renovation. Is that being updated? Is that going to really happen? Or is that just, I mean, where is that relative to the discussion?
It's a brand-new project that was put forth by communications to be able to revitalize that, that station through grant funding, if I recall correctly, not having the CIP in front of me right now.
Not grant funding from the peg funds.
Peg funds. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Josh, thank you for putting us through your money. And then the NAP Activity Center, which I think is a desperately needed expansion. I think would be very positive and excited that's coming on.
Councilmember?
On the naditorium air handling, that 3.2 million, is that, are we going to be able to get reimbursed from our partner on that one?
We have a contract with them that requires- We have a contract with them that requires that. So how they get to that, that'll be for another day, but you know, we've, as, as you're aware, they've, they've been more interested in providing land in lieu of, but we'd have to agree to that, so we'll have to cross that bridge.
Okay, all right. And then they're on that same, same slide, the drainage projects. It looks like everything that, that we've got in the CIP is funded. And I guess I'm, I'm getting a lot of pushback in terms of this new tax or fee or whatever you want to call it. I'm still wrestling with, does it make sense to prioritize the projects that aren't funded and go out for another bond in lieu of a new fee? What would that look like to the CIP? Because I know there's been, you know, I don't know, millions and billions. Cam Carr shows a, a thick document with.
$984 million and $21,180.
Yeah, so a billion dollars worth of drainage projects, mayor. If we were to prioritize and figure out what's legit and wrap that into the CIP and fund through bonds, I guess, how would we look at starting that process?
So I think we've got a list of existing projects. You know, whether they be from the Hurricane Harvey After Action Report or from the Master Drainage Plan, those provide some prioritization, of course, you know. Funding source, I don't know that, you know, we're as concerned with funding sources as we are with, you know, presenting the projects and a prioritized recommendation and then the council sorting through which ones to put in the CIP and what the funding sources are.
Okay, and does, does staff carry like a six to 10-year CIP internally?
Yeah, Robert and his team have been working on extending out a capital program for 10 years. So we've got, you know, five additional years every year that can roll into the, the five-year CIP as we advance. So that, we do have a longer list of projects. Some of the priority ones are identified in the back of the existing CIP.
Okay, any ideas on how much, and I guess those, those year six to 10 is allocated towards drainage?
Councilman Carbone, I'll have to answer, defer to that and answer that question later. Right now, while I'm getting through and looking that up, I have to send that through, Mr. Pearson.
Yeah, I guess bottom line is I'd be interested to see, you know, instead of going after this new tax and this new fee, looking at a, a, a bond package for drainage that helps to solve the, solve the problem without creating some other headaches.
I just want to reiterate for the public discussion. Since 2018, we've had over 1,000 days since Harvey. We really haven't done, we haven't done what we needed to do to, to address the issue. I'm happy to look at if we could all do it on bond projects forever and ever, but there just hasn't been the political will. And so I, I'd like us to see us take a real strong effort. I think that's why the stormwater utility fee is going to come on. But I would love to see what the city engineer does have in the six to 10-year. I just, I haven't seen us make that investment. And Harris County got shut out, City of Houston got shut out, and the City of Pearland got shut out on all their projects that went to the Harvey TLO money. So there's nobody really there to help us. It's just going to kind of be us. So I just want to make that statement for the record.
And to be clear, I know I was out last week, but there, there hasn't been a new tax and/or fee implemented at this point, right? There's just been a, a decision to send that to voters so voters could decide if they prefer that option. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
It'd be the same process for a bond, but once a bond's paid off, we're done paying on it, right? That's my point. If, if you want political will, let's do it. We can add how many millions you want to fund in drainage and we can get rolling and with P E Rs and ready to go.
Oh, Tony, I, I believe every word you say. I've only been here six months and I'm the only one, it seems, along with one or two others that want to address this. And there's been members on this council who've sat here for years and years and years and not really hacked away at this problem. And I think the residents of our city got to work on this. And at the end of the day, you're right, we can put projects on this list, but then we got to ask these guys to maintain it. And so we need to have dedicated dollars there to also maintain these things. It's one thing to buy a house, then you got to spend your 1% a year to maintain that house. And right now, we don't even have the money to maintain anything, let alone go do more. And I think we're, we're starting to have the discussion of what do we want the city to be? And I think this, this CIP project list needs to be more robust. And I look forward to the staff adding more projects on there, but it's just unfortunate we don't have the, the will right now to do that. We're getting better at it, but we got a long way to go.
Member Perez?
Yeah, I think it's probably beneficial for us to focus on what this document's doing. We're having a five-year CIP based on what funding tools we have available to us now. Certainly, if we had a storm sewer fee, Tony, if you want to call it a tax, I won't deny you that. But how, whatever the funding mechanism we get that's presented to voters, that will amend this five-year CIP because we have a different funding mechanism. I don't want to mix the two. I think it's unfortunate that we're mixing the two conversations. But theoretically, if the fee comes in, then we just have a, we have a third component of the CIP where we have an enterprise fund, we're talking about the drainage projects and we're again putting less stress on the, on the, the general fund and putting less stress on sporadic bonding. Going back to the enterprise fund, I want to talk a little bit on the Berry Rose. So, Robert, if I'm understanding correctly, we, we're going to reevaluate whether we're going to do batch reactors or the membrane reactors. And that's what's going to cause us the delay. We're not reevaluating site location, right? We're just going to look at the, the treatment process.
Actually, Councilman Perez, there's several options associated with it, which is MBR, SBR, but it's also alignment of where, where the wastewater goes and how it's treated. So we are taking a look at those variety of alignments as well.
Okay, as we look at that, you know, I, I think generally my concern is if we go too far south, I think what was suggested before was like something like Dixie Farm because we have a piece, or a piece of property there. My general concern is the ancillary costs associated with that. So I, I just to make sure that we, we include that in the final evaluation. The benefit of going from Longwood over to Berry Rose is that we don't, at present, we wouldn't have to cross any channels. But if we have to go any further south, we'll run into a couple, we'll run into Mary's Creek, which would cause us to have some lift stations, along with additional lift stations associated with. The, the south of our land is significantly higher than that track that's on Berry Rose. I think I, I went out and just did a cursory measurement. It's somewhere in the, in the order of magnitude, about seven to 10 feet. So I think there's, there can be some benefit associated with pulling the, the site out of the floodplain. But I think that there's a lot of additional costs and I just would like to see that before we make any final evaluations. I, I would say that I think, you know, if we, if we're adding the bat, or if we're adding the membrane treatment, I think part of the evaluation should include what, what do we have to add with respect to staff? Do we need specialized staff to be able to operate a facility like that? Are we adding additional costs in maintenance associated with having two or three different type of treatment facilities throughout our city at Reflection Bay and J-Hack and then Berry Rose? Or is there a significant more efficiency if we use the same type of treatment or similar type of treatment at all three of the facilities where we can share, share staff, share knowledge, share equipment and share some of the replacement and treatment material? Again, just kind of be as comprehensive in that evaluation as we can. That's all I have.
All right, and if, if staff could put the, the matrix back up that shows the drainage real quick? Thank you. The first three projects there, if I'm not mistaken, are voter-approved projects. And I believe all of these were in the 2019, which is after Harvey. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
I just want to make sure that the, that the citizens are aware that this council for many years, many years, has taken drainage very seriously and have run projects out for the voters to approve. Secondly, I know I've been a part of a, of a council for many, many years that spent many a night talking about drainage. And in fact, after a flood of 94, worked with the Drainage District in putting together a regional drainage study, identifying many, many projects to be done. And to date, all of those projects have been built and they built through going to the voters with those projects. Since that time, additional projects like these. And so I just, I want to make sure that the, that the citizens who are watching tonight are also here tonight and the chambers are aware that there's been a lot of drainage done over, over the many, many years by many people on council. So I don't want to belabor that, but I want to make sure that people ask council members and others, get credit for the work that they've been done. Any other questions, comments? So seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-154.
My round to Mr. Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1595-2, so moved.
Motion of second, staff report.
I'll turn over to Mr. Roche, who has a presentation just to remind you of this item and a couple of answers to the questions that came up the first reading.
All right, I'm back. So moving on to the mid-year budget adjustment, this is the second of two adjustments we do each year. Just a reminder, this is a normal thing. We do it every year. It helps us more accurately, accurately reflect our position since we originally adopted the budget back in September. We made some changes with the first budget amendment, but a lot has happened between now and then. So this is just, you know, making sure that our, our money is being put to the best and highest use. So yeah, it, it's really about that opportunity to adjust spending to align with the resources that we have in need. In the process wa, and process wise, we're really at the tail end here for Budget Amendment Number Two. Wrapping up this fiscal year, today's really the last time we're probably going to be touching FY21 from a budget perspective. You'll be receiving the FY22 preliminary budget August 6th. Wanted to give a quick update to the general fund summary. If, wanted to reiterate that one of the things that has happened this year due to the amount of grants coming in is that the beginning fund balance went from 24.4 million to actually 29 million. That doesn't happen every year. It, it's a nice thing to have happen, but it's a little unusual, so I wanted to point it out. I've updated these numbers to reflect the additional allocations that City Council amended into this budget ordinance last week. So those are inclusive of, of all the changes that City Council approved. And we'll go over those individual changes in a minute here. And if you remember this number down here, the days of cash and reserve, right? If we take our daily, this is what we spend daily in the general fund to run the government. We, you know, divide our total expenses, sorry, we, and then if we take that amount of money in our reserve and divide it by 257,000, you get 104 days. That had been 105, the new expenditures brought it down to 104. 90 days is the target. We will be updating those policies so that it's no longer the 16% when budget is presented to City Council. There'll be an updated financial policy and that'll probably be the only change in it. The additional appropriations, this first list are the ones that were recommended by staff, the fire station repairs. There's two repairs in there for two different fire stations. Street markings increasing that due to COVID-19 related cuts. Additional judges for the municipal court as they work through the backlog caused by COVID-19 kind of hampering the court system. We have some EMS billing changes. Their, their payment schedule got moved up. We are adding back a parks worker, which is a recurring expense and we will note the recurring expenses going forward whenever we do this. We don't typically have recurring expenses, but this is on my shop and me in particular. This got written out of the budget and should have been included. It's just an $11,000 change for the remainder of the year. And then we are converting the jail manager to a sworn officer position. This is again a recurring cost. It's being brought forward because it has to be changed in the civil service plan. We have to reflect those changes. So the actual cost will be about $7,000 for the remainder of the year, but we do it through the budget amendment because it is now becoming a civil service position. The last time we met, we did have some additional appropriations approved by the City Council. So the court has, has been approved for improved audio and video equipment in both courtrooms. That'll be about $100,000. The historically underutilized businesses, getting some tracking assistance in to help us work with, you know, those underutilized businesses. And then the shallow draft high water rescue boat. I think last time I had boats in here, it is just one boat indeed. I did want to point out that we increased the cost from about 18,000 to about 20,000. This is due to us putting in some maintenance money to make sure that we maintain that boat. Hope that's not an issue. We can always take it back down to 18 if it is. Looking at the water and sewer fund, no changes here since we saw last time. This slide is exactly the same. We are not proposing any additional appropriations for the enterprise fund. So any questions?
Any questions from council?
Mr. We, if we get a shallow water boat, can we do a video about it with your new car that you've got?
Sure.
Okay, great. We'll make sure we, we advertise that.
One quick thing, Mayor. On this 462,000 for condensation issues in our station number three, are we any closer to recouping any of this amount from the contractor? This fire station is only a couple of years, three years old and we're having a hard time understanding how we've got to put half a million dollars in it.
Councilman Little, currently right now, we are working with our design contractor or consultant to evaluate that. We're in the midst of doing that analysis with that report and doing those reviews right now to make sure everything's documented, everything is interpreted from the plan set, what was used, how that was designed, and then what the effects are and what's happening today. So then we can create that documentation and utilize that document to go back to our consultant, or the consultant who designed the fire station and continue from there.
If the consultant slash contractor refuses to compensate the city, do we plan to take any legal action in large?
In part, it's going to depend on what that study says. So if, if we're able to make a clear line, we'll make a presentation to council, probably in exact session, about whether or not we want to pursue litigation.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to speak to Judge Farney's email about the audio recording equipment. So I'm glad to see that we're moving forward, that hopefully our courts will be more efficient. I always appreciate the thoughtful updates that you provide to us. Thank you for that.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? And we welcome the judge tonight, by the way. Glad to see you here. No other questions or comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries five to two.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, we'll move to, Mayor Pro Tim, would you present item number six, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Consideration possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1602, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Update on staff report?
Sure, Mayor and council. We introduced this as a recommendation to equalize the requirements for stays, rental stays, short-term rentals to include a, the modern B and Bs and other kinds of uses that people are doing on a private basis. I would, no problem with that, but there is a requirement in the existing ordinances for collection of hot taxes, hotel occupancy taxes. The way that various cities around the country are getting to that is to hire a firm that monitors that and they will do that. We're not proposing as part of this a registration fee. We're not proposing as part of this a registration fee, but we are trying to get into understanding that, and we provide a lot more information in the packet that explains the rationale for that and the quantity of, of the existing uses that are taking advantage of that. And so it's before you for a second reading to move forward. Nothing to add.
All right, before we move forward, we did have a citizen who had signed up to speak to this. I'm not sure if Mr. Ruchi Patel is in the lobby. Because I can't see around the corner. Okay, I just can't see around the corner, so just checking to see. All right. So with that, thanks for the staff report. Open it up for questions, comments from council? Seeing or hearing none?
Mayor, if I could, I wasn't here for the first vote on this, but I did have a couple of questions, and I did send some of them Darren's way at some point, so maybe I can do some follow-ups here. With this, this is both for the contractor to find out how many we have and also to assist with collection, is that correct? I guess maybe Tracy or Lawrence, either one.
So I just want to clarify, this doesn't, this only requires the registration. There's a separate contract between CVB and the vendor to facilitate that. So your question was in dual part, there is going to be a contract with the vendor for that, but that's not this ordinance. This ordinance enables that though, by requiring the registration.
So i, if, if we do require the registration, is there a scenario wherein we could work with the vendors directly to have people with short-term rentals register through those sites when they set up their profiles as an alternative to potentially seeking an agreement with a third party to have them register directly with the city? Is that, that be done with this, or would that be a separate action altogether?
So once we move into the actual agreement, as Lawrence mentioned, with the vendor, we would set up workflows and how that process would look, and the short-term rental owner would go through this online portal registration to register their property with the city through this platform that we will be contracting with.
If I understand your question, though, we're, it'd be untenable really, realistically for us to, I mean, there's a thousand different properties that are estimated for, if you're talking about us trying to manage that ourselves, that...
No, sir, I'm, I'm asking, I guess, so I had asked a question of Darren, that, you know, what would the difference be if we just contracted directly with, you know, Airbnb or VRBO and so forth, to have this be a part of their workflow, their signup, right? And I think some feedback was given that maybe there are some issues with some of the boilerplate agreements that are currently in place with like the Airbnbs and so forth. But is that, if we move forward with, with this to require the registration, that we can make the registration part of the signup process from the major, you know, sites that exist, or are we going to force them to do like a separate registration and then have to have a company to identify where these, you know, short-term rentals exist within the city to then enforce that they are registering rather than have it be a part of the signup process, let's say with Airbnb? I keep using them as example, obviously, because they're the biggest.
I apologize, I think maybe some of the confusion is when you say vendor, I, I thought you were talking about the CVB's, CVB's vendor. When you said vendor, did you mean Airbnb or VBRO or one of those folks?
Yeah, okay, so let me, let me, I guess I'll break that down. So yeah, is, with this, so we're requiring registration, does this give us the flexibility to have that registration be a part of the signup process of a short-term rental property owner, when they sign up for a listing through Airbnb or VRBO and so forth? Or does it still require a third-party service? So you with Tracy contracting with a third-party to go out and identify them and force the owners of the short-term rental properties to still register on a separate website outside of the environment of Airbnb, VRBO, listing, you know, signup process?
Okay, so we will not have a contractual relationship in any way or any regard with any of the short-term rental vendors, being Airbnb, Flip to Key, VBRO. So you cannot register with those third parties, that's not who our relationship will be with. So I, I don't know how those companies would have such a thing. They, they offer a different product. They offer something out there that's just a voluntary tax collection agreement that they would do, and they ask different municipalities or localities, it's not just the municipalities entering an agreement with them. However, it's not as comprehensive. And during the, I would say discovery and processes that CVB went through, they opted to not go with that voluntary tax collection agreement that you enter into with the individual short-term rental companies. So because our relationship isn't with them, we can't do a one-stop-shop essentially, I think is what you're getting at, you know? When somebody goes to Airbnb, using them as the example, can they get their registration with them too? No, that's not what this, this platform does not allow for us to do that, or at least that's the best of my knowledge, but...
Understood.
We can go back and see if that's something that we can allow.
So Tracy, you, you obviously did research to come to this arrangement. Did you, do you have an idea of how many you anticipate, how many properties you anticipate we have currently and what the potential revenue would be, or is that what this process is helping you to find out?
So during the procurement phase, we did look at different vendors, and it's looking like the average estimate of the number of properties operating in the city is hovering around 200, which is higher than what we expected. So obviously, it fluctuates as people decide to keep their property up for rental and whatnot. And then to your point on revenue, that also fluctuates because the average daily rate changes based on demand. So our preliminary data, which is what we included in the packet, at the time of the submittal in February, the average daily rate for short-term rental properties in Pearland was at $353, as compared to our hotels during that time period, we're hovering around $75.
Right, but obviously not with the same frequency, I guess, that people are renting?
The occupancy is going to fluctuate, definitely.
So how do we then, if we've identified who they are, and they, we've put them in a situation where they have to register, how do we monitor when they are occupied or not occupied? Or is that based on the owner system?
So the host properties, just like the hotel owners, self-report on their revenue numbers. So they would complete a remittal form that we have in place, very similar to what our hoteliers do, that will provide their revenue numbers and what their, what their remittals should be to the city on a quarterly basis.
And so I think it was relayed to me that one of the concerns of doing this alternative process or alternative product, as Lawrence said, with going through the Airbnbs and so forth, the sites directly, and allowing them to capture potentially the, the tax and then pass that on to us, was that maybe it was not as transparent because we could not go in an audit, but it sounds like it would be difficult for us to maybe audit this scenario as well because it's based on self-reporting, is that...
So I, I don't want to speak out of turn, and if I have it wrong, Tracy, please correct me, but I believe that the software system that the CVB is getting, or I guess they're purchasing a vendor whose software system has this, can make good calculations to figure out how often somebody's leased by looking at how often something is available, and they will also measure that for when something's taken off the market. So if you see that it's available for 30 days out of the week and all of a sudden, two days it's gone, I think the software system says, hey, probably somebody leased it for two days out of that week, or out of that month.
Ongoing surveillance is the answer to your question, Member Hernandez.
It's a, it's a monitoring platform. If I may also add that the VCA agreement that you're referring to initially is very restrictive in that it will not disclose where the property locations are, nor will it allow us the ability to audit or review any materials if we wanted to, going back to collect past revenue.
I would just say this, this would be similar to how we deal with sales tax. We don't collect it, and we don't audit it. The state controller would be the entity that would audit a self-reporting tax collector, whether it be a sales tax, which we obviously have a large amount of those in the, in the city, or if this moves forward with the hotel tax.
So I guess I'm maybe grappling with, it seems like both systems are voluntary, but it seems like if we go to the major sites themselves and have them voluntarily do it for us, that it, it seems like they would do the work, so to speak, I suppose. Am I missing something in understanding the difference in that process?
And the major sites do it.
In, in other words, in Houston, doesn't Airbnb calculate what's owed to the city of Houston and then automatically remit it back to the city of Houston versus hiring a third-party that goes in and does the, whatever you want to call it, I call it surveillance, and then, you know, paying them a portion, maybe you pay Airbnb a portion too, but isn't that just tacked on, on the bill automatically and remitted back to the city?
And I think there are other cities that have these agreements in place.
Some of the larger markets have entered into the VCA agreement with Airbnb specifically. It is a very restrictive approach. It is an option, and it makes sense for the larger, major markets such as Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, et cetera, to look at that approach. And we did consider it, but we looked at weighing the benefits and what would be best for the city in the long term, and understanding where the short-term rental properties were located and who these host owners are was important to us.
Why do we have to allow them to come in the city anyway?
I think your state legislature says you have to.
Yeah. The thing about it, I mean, and the one that we had, or still have, I mean, they get fined $500, they get the attorney come in, pay the $500 and they're back in business. But the one that I went to on Verone out there in Green Tea, there was over 30 cars parked on both sides of the street and down. And I don't see why, if that happens, why we can't get the police department and the records out there, just haul the damn things off, let them look for them. Because what you're doing, you're causing a lot of problems, and the people out there couldn't even get in their driveway of their own homes. I mean, they come off of Green Tea, went down the street, Verone Street, all the way down there on both sides of the road. And finally, the, the people that live out there had to get traffic cones and put in front of their houses. I mean, to me, this, this is more than just saying, hey, you can't come out here and do this anymore. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's in your face.
Yeah, I think...
You come in, you pay $300,000 plus for a house, and the next day, you got a B and B next door, and these guys are, are filming parties and stuff like that and sending back to the owner in California.
Yeah, I think...
You know, he don't, he don't really care.
Yeah, I, I, I think we've, you know, obviously, this action item is, is separate from a nuisance, and, and you're right, that owner and what goes on in that particular locale is, is a nuisance, and it's a, it's a drag on everybody that lives around them. I, I would also say this, as Tracy pointed out, roughly 200 short-term rental locations, you know, in and around town, yet we only hear about one. And, and so I don't, I certainly don't want to put all short-term rentals in the same boat that, that we've got a guy over here, you know, off a, off a Yost that does this, and the problems that he, that he causes. So do, do, do they cause a problem in a, in a residential neighborhood? They can. I'm sure we'll have others over time, things will happen. But at the end of the day, why and how they are allowed to exist, run a business from their house, that type of thing, is because we have a state legislature that, that allows it, and we can't do anything about that. So I think we ought to, I want to make sure that we stay focused on, on, on this, this ordinance for short-term rentals, and it, I mean, how we have to deal with the, with the property owner is, is, is a different mechanism, and it's a different way of going about doing it. Member Kamkar, you, you unplugged there?
Yeah, no, I, as Mr. Carbone likes to say every now and then, I struggle with this, and this is one I do, because I think, remember, Mayor Pro Tim made some great points. If there's other voluntary ways and the whole process is voluntary, why are we using tax dollars to hire an outside consultant to go collect something on a voluntary basis? And I struggle, I don't see the logic here. Maybe I, maybe I'm not that smart, I'm Texas Aggie, maybe I can't put the math together, I don't know. But what I would tell you is, to the point that Member Owens made, if we just say we're going to collect the taxes and go, what we're saying is we're okay with it. Just deal with it, collect your taxes, we'll leave you alone, and like any good American, just pay your taxes and leave me alone, and you're good. And what we're saying is, let's just collect the tax and get on with it. And I, I would tell Member Owens, I don't want to live next to an Airbnb that throws parties, I just don't. And so I'm, I'm going to kind of circle back to the language, if I just vote yes, and I'm just saying, let's tax it, move on and deal with the people, and I don't want to say that. And so I would ask respectfully to the body, you know, can we push this to the side, say no, and then have a much bigger conversation of what does short-term rental in the definition? I know it's a different conversation than today, but I think there's a way for us to legislate that a short-term rental is a much longer period of time as opposed to one day, because the one-day guys are the guys throwing the parties. It's not the people here that are seeking cancer treatment, it's not the people here that are seeking a job relocation, and they're trying to find a, a short-term answer for their housing. But I, I just, if I just say tax it, I'm essentially saying I'm okay with it, get on with it. And so for me, and I don't want to speak for Member Owens, I'm going to be a no against this, because I think we need to have a bigger answer to this question, and this is not solving this, this is a small bore on a very large problem, and we need to get back to what is the large bore. So I'm going to be a no on this, but only because Member Owens is saying to extend, and I, I think I'm echoing that argument, I just want us to say, what are we going to regulate? Because if we just tax it, once you pay your taxes, I got a lot less beef with you. And I got a bigger beef with these people throwing parties and running businesses in the city next to people who are trying to raise kids and go to work tomorrow. So I'm going to be a no on that, but for a different reason.
Mayor, if I may... I appreciate that, and I agree with most of what has been said. I also appreciate all of staff's and the CVB's efforts on putting this together. I just think on this, I have a philosophical difference of opinion. And so for me, this really comes down to respecting private property and kind of to echo a lot of what's been going on here. The issue that we've had is, we've had some folks who have very much not been respecting the private property of their neighbors, whether that's via parking, whether that's throwing stuff over the, the fence, whether that's creating a really family unfriendly environment, and, and I think that's a huge issue and, and one that we need to address. I then think there's this other group of people that are, are doing things the right way, and since our last discussion, I think some of those people have messaged me, they're single moms, they're, they're grandparents, they're, they're running out of spare room in their front bedroom. One woman, Shontae, messaged me, I'm a retired teacher trying to survive on my retirement. Without Airbnb, I'm not sure how I would have made it. I, I hope that this doesn't pass and, and make it harder on me and put additional hoops, essentially. And then another, another group of people said, I started doing Airbnb to help pay for the high property taxes in Pearland. If we have to pay additional taxes, I will just stop. There are not, there are not that many Airbnbs in Pearland, and you'll just be hurting citizens that may need help financially. So I, I think we, we talk a lot about up here about people wanting to, you know, people trying to make ends meet, people struggling in, in hard circumstances. I, I think we're going to make it harder for those folks, and we're not going to do anything to address the concerns of the, the party Airbnbs. And so I understand that those are two separate issues, and I guess that's kind of my issue is that I feel like we're making it hard on the, the group of people who are kind of doing the right thing and doing right by their neighbors, and we're not doing enough to penalize the people that, that are not respecting the, the private properties of their neighbors. And so again, I, we are the government, and we're nice guys, we all know each other, but we're the government. So what we're talking about doing is hiring a, a private firm to go and surveil what folks are doing on their own private property, trying to make a little extra money running out of spare bedroom. That company is then going to report those folks to the government and let us know what they're doing and if they've registered or not. We're going to force them onto this registry. Of course, it's free for now, but is anyone up here putting their guns on a, a free government registry? Because we all know, I mean, it's free right now, and they're, we just want to know where they're at, I mean, come on. So we're going to force them onto this registry, and if they don't comply, we're going to fine them and fine them and give them a hard time until, what, until eventually you don't comply, you don't get on the registry, you know, you, you go to jail, just like anything else we do. But, so I, I just have an issue with that, and, and I don't want to hassle those people using their property to make ends meet. I want to hassle the, the bad actors. I want to hassle them more than we're hassling them now, whether that's under existing laws, whether that requires new ordinances to, to effectuate. But I, I want to do, again, what Member Kamkar said, let's take a step back, look at some targeted solutions to address the real problems that we're having, because again, what, what Member Owen says, what I know a lot of people in the audience are concerned about, is, is kind of something a little bit different than this, I think.
Member Perez?
Yeah, I, I think...
Yeah, I think we're just stumbling over ourselves, trying to be smarter than it needs to be to solve a problem that really isn't all that complicated. I mean, I respect everybody, everything that everybody's saying, but as the mayor said, there's an issue with nuisance. We have ordinances that deal with the nuisance. We all have agreed we're going aggressively to go after that. Whether we tax the individuals or not, with respect to are they a hotel or are they similar to a hotel, has nothing to do with the nuisance. Now, I look, I think every, we all have sympathy for people who are having to make ends meet. I think that's perfectly fine. But if somebody was running a business out of their home that they produced a product and they sold it to the public, and they didn't provide a sales tax, they're violating a law. They're violating a law we already have in place. We're already asking them, if they're running a business out of their home that provides taxable service, to pay us in taxes. Do we have people that go knock on every door and say, how many of that handmade jewelry did you make and how much, how much do you owe us? No, there's certainly, there's issues with the inventory. But what we're trying to do is listen to our hotelier partners to say there's an incompatible balance with one of their competitors in town. And granted, their competitors have sympathetic stories, but if we're going to say, if you're going to come and visit in town, and you're going to utilize somebody else's facility, and we're going to equate that to a hotel or motel, do we put that into our hotel motel inventory? Do we tax them on that? Do we use that money as part of our hot tax so that we can spend that money to attract more people to come? The enforcement, all of that other stuff, it's a completely and totally separate issue. And we're just stumbling ourselves over something that's fairly simple, over issues that aren't related to it. Now, if we want to just say, look, Airbnbs and VRBOs, we're just not going to call them taxable. That's fine. If that's the direction the council. But we don't need to say, we're not going to tax Airbnb and VRBOs because there's one guy out there who throws parties. They're two completely separate issues. I do think that we owe it to our hoteliers to make sure that there is a fair balance in the market. And if they're suffering, particularly now, because there's cheaper options where people can come in and not have to pay a tax, a tax that we rely on, that we, that benefits the city and benefits our citizens by utilizing it for our conventional visitor bureau and the things that they want to do, I do think it's necessary. And I do think it's beneficial, and that's why I'll support it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor Proton?
Just have one final question. Lawrence, maybe if you could help push me in a direction. Is there, I'm trying to understand, and I've been going back and forth with this, is there a differentiation between somebody who just rents a room in their house, as people do, versus somebody who creates a listing to, I guess, then create a business to rent that room on a third-party site?
So the state of Texas and its hotel occupancy class would tell you that there's no difference between renting a room and renting the entire home. So whether it be one or the other, the hotel occupancy tax would be applicable.
So in theory, people that rent their room to their cousins or whatever would also be subject to this?
Well, if it's a long-term lease, so maybe that's where I should make that distinction. If it's more than 30 days, if you rent a room out for more than 30 days, hotel occupancy taxes don't apply, because at that point, you're considered a resident and not transient by the state of Texas.
Okay, got it. I think there are just a lot of things that are going in my brain. I would like more information, in particular, just kind of how we can, I don't know what the difference is with an internet, you know, based company operating in our city and us being able to work with them there to recover this type of tax versus going to the property owners in our jurisdiction directly. So I just have a lot of questions outstanding, so I'm not sure that I'm comfortable moving forward with this yet. But I do think that there is some substance here to be massaged for future consideration.
So the, the hot tax ordinance, 718-1, that's in place now. So how many, how many Airbnb entities or short-term rentals outside of our hotels are complying?
Currently, we're collecting from three properties who are remitting. And I'd also just like to add that the 7% local tax, which we're talking about, is paid by the guest who stays at the property. And the property owner actually collects it and then would remit it to the city on a quarterly basis, just like our hotels do.
Okay. So when we talk about the folks are doing it the right way, unless they're one of the three, then they're, they feel like they're doing it the right way because they're not throwing parties, but legally, as of right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, they should be collecting and remitting hot tax?
Yeah, and I think the issue there is, we just watched an infrastructure deal that was about to fall apart in Washington, because one political party, not mine, but one political party said, let's pay for this by beefing up the IRS. Let's get some more IRS agents, and they can go and exist, go and enforce existing tax laws, and we can get the revenue that way. And the party that we're all in said, oh, when you go and hire more coercive agents of the state to go and meddle in people's lives and try to get more money from them, even if that's money that by the book they should be paying, maybe that's not what we want to be doing. Maybe that's still raising their taxes effectively. And so that's kind of what I would say. It's just not my biggest priority to go and hassle these people when, yeah, there's probably a lot of people selling jewelry out of their house and not paying tax. I don't really want to send anyone to go and surveil them either.
Okay, so I mean, I guess, do you propose we amend the hot tax ordinance? I mean, because either way, it's, we're either going to enforce rules or we're not. And we can't pick and choose. Or at least, I don't want to start picking and choosing.
Well, I mean, don't-
You can pick and choose every day.
I think there are alternatives to enforcing the existing rule outside of a registration. That's where I'm sitting on this, Mayor, for now. And I would just like to explore that a little further. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, where Tony was coming down is, if we're going to have something on the books as law or rule or an ordinance, either we enforce it or we don't. And yes, are there, are there times where, you know, we get it wrong and we don't enforce it? We do. But this has been brought to our attention several years ago about how we go about identifying short-term rentals, how do we go about trying to get them to comply with the law. I would dare say 90% of the people who are not paying are probably not even aware that they're supposed to. I think that's part of the issue. But we all know ignorance of the law is not a defense of the law either. So, you know, how do we go about doing it and do it right? At the same time, I want to, you know, I think people being entrepreneurial and trying to do things and do things differently, I think that's great. But you've also got people who have invested millions and millions and millions of dollars in sticks and bricks who are doing it the right way. We know exactly where they are, and they're remitting and they're following the law. And it's the same law that a short-term rental is supposed to fall, fall under. So, you know, if we don't approve this, and I would expect us to have a discussion about how short-term rentals are even classified on our books. Because if they're classified to pay the tax, then we are giving our staff the direction to go collect. Yeah.
Mayor, I would be in favor of that discussion, to be honest with you. I would rather say no today with the, knowing that each group is voluntary. The consultant is voluntary. The users on the Airbnb are voluntary. And I'd rather legislate what a short-term rental is to attack these nuisance guys, not to, you know, the person who's doing one day, and it's for their sisters, friends, visiting is a very, very different classification than-
No doubt.
The party boy.
No doubt.
You know, and I want to make the party boy pay. But as soon as we get the party boy's guy's money, he's paid his taxes, and I can only do so much to get party boy. I would rather legislate party boy out and not go and set up another voluntary registration.
We have ability to go in and legislate what the state has already defined as short-term rentals?
No, sir. We wouldn't be able to, I mean, the state's definition is there. So we did adopt enabling language when we adopted our portion of the hotel motel taxes to pull one type of entity out of that, or one type of hotel, one type of program where people stay, I think, would create an equal protection violation that we would have to contend with at some point in time, whether it be by the hoteliers or whether it be by the people who are hoping to rent their properties out.
Yeah, I think what this agenda item about is an enforcement mechanism. It's not whether it's fair, it's not whether it's, you know, we should go after party boy, or we should make exceptions for people who are renting for a month. The law's already on the books. This suggests, do we want to collect it? And if we do, we need to have a mechanism in place. And that's what this agenda item is about. So voting tonight on this doesn't preclude us from having another conversation about how we enforce people who are violating noise ordinances or traffic ordinances or whatever, trespassing, litter, or whatever. We can have that discussion, but this is a total, totally separate argument or agenda item. And I'd say we vote on it.
Member Perez?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think we should be ready to vote. I do think that we're, we're discussing a lot of situations to come up with a sympathetic issue, but, you know, I've never had a family member come over to use my house, and I charged them and worried about hot tax. It's usually free. If I have a friend whose friend is coming into town, I'm probably not going to tell them, log on to Airbnb and so you can use my room. I mean, those situations are not, they're just not happening. We're talking about people who are running a business out of their home and whether they comply with the law. That's really it. Let's just, let's be fair about how we're legislating. We want to talk later about, you know, how aggressive we want to be with the enforcement. That's a separate issue. But we can't, we can't have laws on the books that we just choose not to, to ignore. That's just, it's silliness. It's just, it's just silly.
Agreed. Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Can you read that, please?
No.
Thank you. Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kam Car?
No.
Motion fails four to three.
All right, moving forward, new business item number seven. Mr. Kam Car, would you place that on the agenda, please?
Yes. Consideration possible action R2021-152. So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. We're looking forward to opening a brand-new library on Shadow Creek Parkway. This will replace the storefront that's been in by the HEB there on Business Center Drive for years with a proper dedicated facility. But apart from that, as we get closer to that, struck us that rather than calling the facility, just repeating what's been there, and calling it the West Side Pearland Library, some discussions, we would like to suggest that the building, which is ours, but we'd ask the Missouri County Library System to echo that, that we instead termed that the West Pearland Library, just to get away from that side sort of nomenclature. And I believe there's a representative from the Friends of the Library that is here, and they've made comments, and they can speak for themselves about any concerns that they might have. Nothing to add, sir.
All right, thank you. And I did attend the last library board meeting. And Ms. Carbone is here as well, as a representative from that board. And there's a fairly long history with that library, and they were recommending, you know, something, West Side Library, Pearland West Side Library, something of that nature. I did ask them if we could drop the word "side" out of it, just because of the potential negative connotation that it can bring, not always, but it can. Their biggest, I guess, question, or what they wanted to make sure was that "west" is a directional or a type of word that they wanted to see in there. They did not want to see Shadow Creek Library, because it's for everyone in the county, not just, you know, certain segments. So during the course of that discussion, asked them if they would be okay with West Pearland Library. If you look at the naming of the libraries from the county's perspective, it, of course, we're the only city in the county that has two libraries, so it's, we're different. But most, it's the city library, you know, Pearland Library, Mamble Library, Alvin Library, so forth and so on. So this keeps with that naming as well, West Pearland Library. And whatever we're doing here, I think is being taken to Commissioner's Court to validate. So we think it keeps with the spirit of what everybody's looking, looking to do. Any other questions, comments? All right. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kam Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-152.
All right. Mr. Little, would you can put number eight on the table for us?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R2021-156. So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second?
In the same spirit, this is one of the last items necessary for getting the library ready for the public. And as a modern library, it does require a lot of technology, working off of the byboard. Source this from DataVox for the library, be consistent with other systems that we have, and part of the outfitting of that. So recommend the DataVox contract for the $476,000. Nothing to add.
All right. Into council questions, comments. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little?
Stepped out.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kam Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right. Moving, moving forward in the agenda, new business item number nine. Mr. Perez, would you present that, please?
Happy, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R2021-153. So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any staff report?
The background memo clarifies the responsibilities for the council, and we have a recommendation for an appointment to the management district number two before you. Nothing to add.
All right. I'm trying to, sorry about that. I was just trying to get to her name.
Kristi Jordan.
There it is. Making sure that, I'd be ought to be read into the record.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Yeah. And with this, we are, would be recommending Kristi Jordan. She's an employee of JSC Federal Credit Union. She also lives in the city, as well as the, works for a property owner in the particular district. So with that, she's been recommended, I think, as well by the, by the board itself, correct?
That I couldn't swear to.
Trying to remember if they actually-
I think Mr. Buchanan had brought this forward, so I don't know if it's gone to the board yet.
We're the ultimate-
Yeah.
Comes to us, anyway. Okay. So, yeah, Kristi Jordan is being presented for your consideration. So any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I do believe there is a board recommendation in the attached, there is a board recommendation attached.
I just had a quick question on these, and I think I've asked this question before on some other appointments that we've made. Do we have like a copy of her resume or CV or anything like that? I didn't see it in the attachment, but I didn't know if those may be provided another time, and I missed it.
It wasn't provided to us. I know she filled out one of our applications-
At some point?
Yeah, formal applications that was sent to-
Which I know includes a request for a resume.
Right.
Okay.
I know that was provided to the board.
Gotcha. I might have just missed that. Yeah, if we could get those in the packets, which I know we often do have, but, yeah, no issue from me. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
There he is.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Kam Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one five three, appointing Kristi Jordan.
All right, moving forward to number ten. Mr. Owens, would you present that, please?
Consideration input, discussion, and comp and class follow-up from the June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. I move.
It's just a discussion item, nothing to be voted on tonight. We will be looking for some consensus. Staff will give a report here in a second, and a presentation as an update from the, from the last time they were here to discuss this. And so I think at the end, there's some recommendations of, or potential recommendations, and staff's going to be looking to us to give them some direction as we get there. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
And likewise, I'll turn it over to Lorraine James, our Human Resources Director, and she'll do exactly what you said, Mayor. She's remote.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to present the information with regards to the comp and class study with the few follow-up items we discussed in the June twenty-eighth meeting. So as a part of this discussion, there were a few items we had to follow up on, first being provide an update of comparable cities as the PPOA. Secondly, formalize a plan for all non-exempt staff. Three, revisit the salary recommendations to include inflation by total costs with benefits. And then finally, look at bilingual certification pay based on positions. So now we're looking at the market comparisons following the June meeting. The PPOA provided a list of preferred market peers, of which nine of thirteen recommendations were all included in the market survey, and those are identified by the checkmarks. So online, we do have Evergreen Solutions, who can talk about some of the changes and impact with the new market data that was provided.
Hello, so this is Mark Holcomb again from Evergreen Solutions. I am the person who presented on June twenty eighth. And to follow up to Ms. James, we did, as mentioned, take another look at the, you know, market comparison and how that would change based on the updates recommended by the PPOA. And so there were nine of thirteen recommendations already included. We did, we did remove the additional peers, you know, that we had also included that they asked to be taken out. And when we made the adjustments, or rather that they didn't recommend, not that they requested to be removed, but they didn't recommend. And when we made those adjustments, the market positioning did change to about one percent behind market at the midpoint of the police officer range. So you see that information shared at the top right of the screen. With the new peers, the, the adjustment shows police officers down, or rather, the market comparison shows police officers about one percent behind market at the midpoint. And so as a result of this, in addition to the inflation numbers that we're going to talk about in a moment, we are recommending an adjustment of the police plan by one and a half percent. And so again, that does...
Josh, can you, can you raise his mic up? Hang on a second, Mark. We're having a hard time here.
I apologize, yeah.
There we go.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, please go, please move on. Yeah.
Okay. So we are recommending a one and a half percent increase to the pay, the, the police pay plan that we had shown before. As a result, both of this updated adjustment and the inflation numbers that we're going to talk about in just a moment. And so I will pass it back to, to Lorraine James to discuss the inflation, and then I'll come back in a moment.
So in terms of proposed pay plans, currently we have a plan with regards to our current compensation structure. So the recommendation moving forward is to move all non-exempt hourly staff and transition them to a step plan. And with that, the exempt staff will maintain an open pay plan moving forward. So as we talk about inflation and adjusted solutions, Mark will go over this slide here to talk about what are some adjustments we have made and the costs that are associated with the changes.
So these costs reflect the updated salary-only numbers that, that we have recommended as a result of the inflation adjustment that we took another look at. So as was shared during the previous council meeting, we did recommend, our original recommendations were based on a projection of inflation that we had gotten in early May of this year. We went back and took a look at the inflation-adjusted numbers, and probably as everybody can attest to in their own personal lives, we understand there has been a, a sort of an unprecedented, you know, adjustment in recent years, at least here with inflation. And we found there was an additional 1.2% inflation over the months of May and June. And so that 1.2% did come after we had pulled the, the original inflation numbers. So we are recommending a one percent increase to the plans that we had looked at, again, with the police plan, getting that one and a half percent as a result of the, the updated numbers that we looked at for police. So this cost increases the recommendations that we were looking at by about $400,000. So the previous numbers, I believe, we were showing the, the very bottom of the slide here, you'll see that two percent increase in the combined cost of about 2.8 million. Previously, it was about 2.4 million. And so this reflects the updated cost for both police as well as the inflation adjustment for that 1.2%.
Yeah.
All right, so in talking about solution costs, I work with our finance partners to determine what funds, how much was cost us in terms of budget. So in looking at it, with the changes in Evergreen, the total is 2.8 million dollars. And with estimated tax and benefit costs, that's roughly around 850,000 for a total of 3.6 million dollars in terms of change. So when you look at these calculations, this does represent a snapshot in time, so there will be some budget changes, you know, when it comes down to terminations and new hires with regards to our city. What we need feedback on are three things. First, feedback on targeting the adjusted solution costs of 2.8 million dollars for salaries only for a total of 3.6 million dollars budget permitting. We also need alignment on the required new step plans for all non-exempt employees. And then we also need to consider other compensation-related considerations, which would be an expansion of certification pay programs inclusive of position-related certifications, as well as bilingual certification pay by position, which would be roughly around 25,000 per month for the recommendations from Evergreen Solutions. So what are next steps based on budget adoption? Once the new plans are adopted with chosen implementation scenarios, software system training will be available for each own staff. We can move forward with policy and procedure development internally for departments and externally for the organization. We can move forward with new job descriptions. We can create information to be communicated to employees regarding the changes to their position, pay ranges, implementation, classification, titles, and changes. And then finally, we can update within our respective payroll system. So with that, I'm going to move back to this slide here, talk about some considerations from council directly. So at this point, what is some feedback and questions you may have for us at this moment?
Thank you, Ms. James. Good presentation. Before we move to council for questions and comments, we do have a citizen that signed up to speak to this particular agenda item, Mr. Adam Carroll. Since you are representing an association, we'll give you the five minutes if you need it. Thank you for being here tonight. Yeah, and thank you for your patience.
No worries, I appreciate it. Adam Carroll, twelve five eleven, Brit, seven seven five eight one. I'm here representing the Pearland Police Officers Association, and really, my intention to come up here and speak was to tell council, thank you for continuing to study this compensation plan and recognizing that it is important to the city employees. And also, thank you for allowing us to give some input into who our market peers should be. It was much appreciated. One of the things I, you know, I was given this, this morning, so I haven't really been able to look at it till I got off work this afternoon. It seemed like everything in the memo kept referencing the, the police officer midpoint pay. And I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I don't know any applicants that come looking to work somewhere and they look at what the midpoint pay is versus what the starting pay is. So I'm not sure what, while we're talking about a midpoint pay, maybe that'll get explained later on. I can tell you this, we just lost a really outstanding applicant to League City, and his reason was starting pay. I sat down on that oral board, and that guy came with a ton of experience from New Orleans, looked great, League City's going to get a good applicant. And again, when we gave him the job offer, he eventually turned us down and gave League City as a, his choice. Moving on, I'm, I'm getting off topic. I really hope that there is some type of step play plan being looked at for the civilian employees. I do want to reiterate the importance of that, I think, for recruitment and retention, not only with the fire department, but with every department within the city. I think that's something that's going to be very important moving forward. And when it comes to Evergreen's recommendation, we were a little bit confused on, I believe, last, last go-around, the recommendation was a three percent increase to every step in the police pay plan and a two percent COLA. And this one, I'm, I'm seeing the talk of the, of a one percent increase, but I'm not, not sure, I'm losing something in translation, and everybody I've talked to has different opinions on it, so I'm hoping we can kind of get some clarification on what, okay, what is the recommendation in total? If the recommendation, I can tell you, I've talked to the membership, if the recommendation is a three percent adjustment to all the steps and a two percent COLA, the membership is completely content with that and would, would not fuss. And on a side note, real quick, I want to give a shout-out to Lorraine James and her team for doing this sick time buyback project. I think they, it was well thought out and very thorough, and it's been well-received by every city employee that I've talked to. A little off-topic, but I think it's very important to say thank you to her for her work on that. All that to say, thank you for the continued study on this. Again, it is very important to, to everybody, so we really appreciate that. And that, that was really my main point, was to get up here and tell you guys thank you for that. So it, it was much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Always good to see you here as well and representing the folks that you do. We'll open this up for questions and comments from council. I would suggest if, communication staff, go ahead and leave that last slide up that Ms. James was referring to. Is that, in a nutshell, I want to make sure that we stay focused on giving feedback back to council, or excuse me, back to staff, and those were the questions they were asking. So I want to make sure that we're, that we're doing that. But before we do, I know there was a couple of questions earlier. Mr. Ward, I want to make sure, there was some questions about the, the potential compression that was being created, and I couldn't remember the exact spot, but we want to address that. And I'm not sure if Mr. Holcomb got that question. Ms. Ms. James, I'm not sure if you got that question to give to Mr. Holcomb back earlier. And then secondly, I heard you correct, Zach, that you had a question on whether or not we had a position for paramedic in the, in the study. Is that correct? I want to make sure that, that both those questions get not only asked, but also answered tonight, because we did ask those earlier in the day. So not sure, Ms. James, if y'all have an answer for those.
So Lorraine, do you have answers on the compression and the paramedic, if that's in or not?
She, she got unmuted. Let's see.
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go. Yep, we can hear you. There you go.
Sure. So yes, there were two questions that was raised by Mr. Ward I had taken notes on. So in terms of the firefighter classification, it doesn't need to be 100% separate from the driver-operator classification, because they aren't directly reporting to each other. The vast majority of firefighters report to lieutenants, and if any individual firefighter reports to a driver-operator and there is a compression issue, it can be handled. However, it is very different than police, where almost every officer reports to a sergeant. So in that situation, they're not comparing apples to apples with regards to that step plan. And the second question around the EMT step plan, so with the EMT step plan, anyone who's considered to be a non-exempt employee, as known as being an hourly employee, we have placed them within a step plan. It's a matter of us adjusting them and moving them over to the fire pay plan, but they are also in consideration for a step plan as well.
Okay.
I guess if I can follow up on that compression, so you ride in the back of the truck, you, you work your way up and you get paid, and if you get promoted to DO, you're going to take a pay cut?
Not necessarily so, sir. When you look at the two-step plans, if you are currently a fifth-step firefighter and you're promoted to a driver-operator, you're moving to a fifth-step driver-operator, and that is a five percent difference in salary.
Okay, so not at all times, but if you rode in the back for a while, you work your way up the steps, then you promote, then that, I guess that's where the issue arises? And I guess, are we okay with that? I don't know, is this common in other departments where you, you've got the potential of a decent-sized pay cut going from firefighter to DO?
So there isn't a pay cut. So the way the step plan is structured is that we have it classified as an F1 level, F1B level, and a separation between the F1 to FB at every step is five percent. So if you promote it from being a firefighter and are an F1 at grade 10, and you're making a certain amount of dollar, once you move to the next level, DO level, that is automatically increased to five percent so that you aren't making the same amount of money between the two levels.
Okay, so just to clarify, you're never going to take a pay cut moving from firefighter to DO because you're in the same step?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right, and then there was a question in regards to, to the paramedic classification. And do we have that classification?
Yes, that's already done, but it's placed under the regular non-exempt plan. It's a matter of just replacing it and putting it onto the fire structure.
Open for questions, comments? Councilmember?
Yes. I just want to go back really quickly. Can we go back to the slide that showed all the cities that we were comping, and I guess the new ones? I just want to understand. And so the ones that had, didn't have blanks or didn't have checkmarks next to them, those were the ones that were added to the grouping?
That is correct.
So I just want to make sure I'm, I'm getting, working with the same set of data. So with this new set of data, the recommendation right now is 1.5%. I guess is 1.5% more than what, I guess, the data we had a month ago. Is that my understanding of that?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So that, I guess that's an improvement. I think there's a lot of warrant, when I look at the, the chart here to the right, the, the 3.7% below, or for the people who can't see very clearly, sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-one, nine, ten. I mean, that's almost four percent behind. I mean, that's almost 4% behind. I mean, that's, that's out of the norm of what I would consider like 2 to 3% being there. And as was made during the points, you know, regular items at the grocery store going up and I, I just, I struggle that the city apparently wants to be the best, but then we don't want to, we don't want to pay a commensurate salary for that. And I think as our city grows, the challenges with Harris County and Houston and stuff spilling over, we need the best folks we can get. I don't, I want us to be competitive. I don't want to lose people to stinky old League City or Mannville or God knows anywhere else. And if we have to adjust that number, I would, I would ask the staff, we need to sharpen our pencil a little more on that. I'm, I'm happy that we're only 1% below the midpoint, but that's not, that's not where I want my focus to be as a council member. And I think we need to get more competitive because when we're getting kids out of school, they're not starting off with four or five years' experience. They're, they're starting off with none or very little. Josh, do we have the pay, the sick pay benefits thing? Mr. Carroll brought that up and I just want to go over that memo. I think that's an important item that the staff brought up and I'm very thankful for their work on that. And I just want to cover that ground real quick as we're doing council input and discussion. So the way, Ms. who's our, Lorraine, right now, if you, if you retire from the city, what happens to your pay right now? Your sick pay that you accrue over years and years and years?
So currently with our sick time, it depends on your position and your tenure organization. So you're either going to leave with a sick time balance of either 360 hours, which is up to the policy limit, or 720 hours up to the policy limit.
That's in place now or is that what we're discussing doing?
That is in place now.
And then as we scroll down on this, what, on the options to provide, sell back their time, what is the, the policy to date?
Right now, we do not have a sick buyback program that's available to employees, which is why we are presenting these options. And so with that, currently employees only receive payout upon leaving the organization up to the policy limit.
I would, I've, this workup was done really well. I think this is an important way for us to have dollars that our employees earn, they deserve to keep. I would, as working in the private sector, if I earn that time, whether it's sick pay or paid time off, I look at that as my money. That's how I put food on the table. I don't think we should treat our staff members, our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, EMS, I don't think we should treat them any different. So I would highly encourage as part of this council input and discussion that we try to incorporate this in this year's budget for this policy. I think we have to look at these unaccrued liabilities and start planning for them and have some policies in place of how to deal with them. That would be my encouragement.
Yeah, if I could just add quickly, I, I agree with that and appreciate the detailed write-up here. I think this is a, an important thing and I'm glad to see some structure around it. I, I, I think a lot of the, the things I wanted to discuss have kind of been drained. Again, just want to thank all the work on this, especially going back and looking at those additional comps. And no, as we've talked about before, this is a, the lion's share of our budget is, is people and we want to be an organization that puts our people first, retains and attracts good people. It's essential to everything we do at the city and literally everything else that we talk about is kind of just a cherry on top of, of the sundae that is having a, a great people-centered organization. So thanks, thanks for the work and I think we're getting closer to being in the right direction.
Counselor? Yeah. Turn my mic on and cut it off. On the studies that went on for the compensation classification, do we have classifications on each employee that works for the city?
Uh, yes, we do have a formalized document that we have in our department of every position we have in the city.
Okay, so if something changes on that employee, so does that classification? I mean, give you, for instance, when we did the, uh, going out on the city for the rough cut, uh, contract and we did that, we had four employees in public works that worked on that. And so I asked the point, you know, what they were going to do with the four employees, will they come back into the city and they're going to manage the contracts on a rough cut? So by all things, they should have had their classification changed at that point to include them into a different area of, of managing contracts or something for that, whatever y'all have set up on that. So as a part of that, you know, and as, I think, you know, for the police department, they, um, they did quite well. I mean, far as what they work and do for the city, it's a, it's a really good job. But I want to know when we figured out the dollar amount and the classification and did that increase in there, did that include the step program into that increase? And does that include anything as far as a take-home pay vehicle that we provide, you know, from the city standpoint? And for, for the total cost increases, this total package, I guess, of the increase in there? So, you know, I'd like to find out if that includes, you know, that, because I hate to see us move, you know, as a point losing, at least that we've trained and everything else here and sending them to League City or whoever, if we're not, you know, competing with it, but make sure that we offer all of those things in there within the, the package through there, through the step program. You know, a few years ago, they, they tried to take that step program away. But, and also on the regular employees, I guess altogether, we're looking at a total of about 3.6% include everything. Does that include the longevity or the employees that's calculated in their salary or, or what? I'd like to kind of find, find that out.
Salary and benefits, so social security, all the wage-based items. I'm certain that doesn't include longevity because that's individualized, obviously. And that's not changing with the rate changes.
Yeah, so to make sure we capture all those costs in there. And speak on that because, you know, right now where we're at, all the funds come out of the general fund budget. That's the only area we have, you know, to take money out of for salaries and benefits. And right now, about a little over 65% of that general fund budget goes nothing but compensation. And, you know, for employees and benefits. And so, you know, when you start looking at those numbers like that and it's just, it's coming close to the top of what we actually bring into the department. So once you get to that position, what do you do then? So I think there's just a lot of questions that need to be asked, you know, when you're looking on, from what I see on the budget, we've got a, this time it would be actually a 3.6% increase with the total of everything. And if you combine that with what we did in '21, you're looking at a salary increase or total, I guess, of close to 6% total in, in for that. So, you know, this, this is kind of unusual year too, when, when we look at, especially on non-exempt and, and a year and a half that we had with the, uh, virus and everything. Those people that are non-exempt and can make overtime, they made a, a pretty healthy bit of money over what they normally would make in there by being able. Of course, they were out working too, but still it was a, a lot of difference that they were able to make overtime through that. And I think that, you know, that's a good thing for them to be able to do that and it should be paid. And at one time, and I don't know if it's changed or not, but you could work overtime and you can actually take it as time off or overtime. And I think there's about three different ways that you can take that time. And I didn't know if that's still in play with the city now to do that. So those are just some questions and I'd like to have some answers for. If we're going to make decisions, make total, you know, decision on everything, we need to take, take a look at it, make sure we, we're making the right decision and not back ourselves in a corner to where we can't get out later on and not do anything. This is the second time I know the, the comp, uh, classification and all has been done. And one of them was done on my three-year period that I was off, but I think it took two, two years in order to, to come up with the money to pay that. We couldn't do it all at one time, so.
Member Perez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'm, I think, um, compensation study, as I said before, it, I mean, I find it both good news and bad news. You know, I, I've never been shy about the fact that I, I think that our employees, all of our employees are our greatest asset. They make our system function, they make the city function and they should be compensated We've advocated, I've advocated for more than a 2% COLA in the past. And, you know, knowing that as we did get 2%, I think we've achieved 2% in every year that I've been on council, we still haven't been able to keep up. So even, even the cost of living adjustments we've made were not enough. So I think at a bare minimum, we need to provide our employees with what is being recommended here. Again, we, we have a tendency to hear from two organizations that have, that, that represent a portion of our staff, but we don't ever get to hear from all of our staff other than through the city manager. I think pretty much any, any situation that we have that shows a degree or perception of impropriety in one department probably exists in all departments to some level, to some degree. You know, we want to alleviate those improprieties. We want to make sure that we have funding so people are rewarded for good work. We've talked about in the past. But, but the, we tend to lose a little bit of oxygen when it comes to actually accepting a budget that, that requires a tax rate to make these, these salaries what they need to be. So I, my hope is that council will remember these conversations a little bit later in the year and we're adjusting the, we're adjusting our budget to make sure that our greatest asset is treated as if they are that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Member Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, this 3.6, I think one of the questions that PPOA had was, that is a recommendation of what one step plus the 2% COLA, correct?
Lorraine, that's the, that's the target, right? That highlighted yellow bars?
Yes, let me go back to the yellow, yellow sheet one second. Yes, one step.
One step plus the COLA?
It's inclusive.
Okay, all right. And have, have we looked at the starting salaries? PD was brought up. I mean, it's, even our midpoint and high point could be great, but if we can't, if we can't get the, the good folks at the beginning, we have no chance of keeping them at all.
If I could, I'd be cautious about anecdotal. I mean, we can all come up with, you know, an, an example, but we, we have hundreds of applicants that are enticed and we regularly, this morning, we had people from another department. So we'll definitely look at it, but the problem frankly, just me thinking about this would be if you move that, that up, there's going to be a cascading with everything else and then your 3.6 is going to go that much more because you have to maintain the separation. So we'll take a look at it, but I wouldn't guarantee that that won't cause a whole bunch of other problems for us.
Real quick, I remember Mr. Holcomb distinctly saying, three out of every four employees are below the, the, the minimum. And that's kind of the problem of how we got in the water billing issue. We had somebody who wasn't properly paid and instead of paying the extra $15,000, we got a $6 million problem and God knows how many other headaches. And I, I agree with you city manager on some level, but it's some people, just pay them their money. If they're good at their job, pay them their money. And if they start out well-paid, I imagine they'll keep trying to do a good job. And I, I don't want to say it under Tony, but I, I think that's important that the minimum is where I think a lot of us should be looking at. The median and the high, the high-paid guy, I'm happy for them, great. Right, for somebody that wants to be a part of the city apparently and starting out, they should be paid a salary they can live on.
Yeah, it's, I guess.
This is the consultant?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to provide a, one point of, of clarification because as we've been talking a lot about the police minimum entry level salary, that 3.7% differential is representative of your current salaries. That is not representative of where you will end up after the study. So actually the 3.7% at the minimum would actually be a raise, you would be paying police slightly over that market salary at the entry level after the recommendations. I just wanted to provide that clarification to make sure that we were all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I think, you know, other cities will also, you know, make these changes along the way. I guess to provide some feedback to staff, we've got three bullet points that are up here. Feedback, Clay, do you have direction on at least, especially number one?
Right. So I haven't heard, you know, I think what the, the yellow highlights is what we'd want to land and as you heard, that's going to move up the people in the positions and it's going to move the structure. So as long as we, you know, can, you know, you know, it's always a balancing act and, and we, we've got revenue restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. So as long as there's a sense that we're all comfortable trying to target that, you know, that's, that, that's our goal. And then we've long wanted and advocated HR and us to try to figure out a way to get to into the step plan. So I think the timing's right for that, for the non-exempt. I haven't heard any objections to that. I think it provides a progression and most every day, there's some issue that comes up that I think that will help address. And then the third, obviously, those cert pays, the bilingual has been talked about the most and we got the most interest in starting with that, excuse me, but we would advocate moving towards targeted, not everything and anything, but targeted certifications down the road. But starting with this budget, the, the bilingual certification pay for positions that warranted. So I haven't heard any objections to that either.
Member Hernandez, you had a question real quick?
Yeah, I had a question on the position-related certifications. Are we, is that kind of certifications across the board that we're looking at or are those like targeted by need?
Very targeted because, you know, for instance wastewater, water operators, I think we want to provide a progression, a career progression where there's operator two, three, four. And to get to each of those, you have to have certifications to get that. So you wouldn't get a certification pay and in those cases, you get a permanent, you know, pay adjustment because you achieve that higher level of job classification. So, you know, there's going to be some, we could, we could come up with all kinds of certifications and pay, you know, it's easy to spend, but that's not the idea that we want to look at that really hard.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was saying is identifying what those needs are internally to incentivize, you know, talent seeking those certifications that would be of benefit to us, particularly if they make things more efficient or something along those lines. But I would be in favor of that if we could, you know, further explore how we identify what those are. For the bullet point number one, I think, you know, the, the bold portion is very important. So, you know, budget permitting, sure, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. It looks like kind of based on some prediction I've been reading, 2% for 2022 is kind of, you know, where you need to be as far as adjustment goes. And I think that's all the input I have. Don't really have much on bilingual certification. I mean, I'm kind of benevolent on that.
Mayor, just want to add one thing for the record. Can we add to the bullet and for the minutes, Mr. Crystal, that two of the, two of the members wanted the sick pay buyback as part of the other considerations as we go into the, putting this all together and rolling this in?
So I'm sorry, what were you asking?
Just putting, putting the sick pay buyback as another bullet at the very end of that green one?
Other compensation-related considerations?
Yeah. I mean, the presentation, but yeah, we, we hear that in the sick pay.
I just want to add it. So whenever we put in the minutes, what do we want to do, that we reflect that that's what we want to do.
So do you, do you feel like you've got enough direction? I mean, we've got a, we've got a budget coming to us.
Yeah, you're going to get that in two weeks and we're in that crunch time. So trying to fit all this in is, is the challenge and opportunity for us.
All right. All right. So let's, uh, let's move on. We do have one other item that was removed from consent agenda. Item D is in David and I'll let David present it.
Yeah, I just wanted a quick clarification on this. We're spending $174,000. Does that include a new truck?
This is, member.
Hey, hang on, we need to.
Member Little, would you introduce?
Wait, put it on table.
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action resolution number R2021-132, so moved.
We have a motion in a second. Mike? Might get a staff report to answer.
Sure. So we have a fleet of ambulances, obviously necessary, required for the operation. One of the techniques to frankly save money is that we take the box that's in the back of it and put it on a new chassis, the chassis wears out, the truck itself, but we can save the box and move it, so that's what this is doing, so.
So it includes a new truck?
It is the truck, if you will. It's not the box.
Right, you're taking the box part where the injured party rides and put it on a new truck.
And new truck, yes, chassis.
That's all I want to know.
Yeah, wheels, wheels and engine, box coming. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-132.
All right, and with that, no other business, and we will adjourn at 9:40 PM. Good night, folks.